All right, good evening, everyone. City Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Alderman Ru Simmons. Alderman Saffron.
Here.
Alderman Rabel.
Here.
Alderman Rayney.
Here.
Alderman Fluddin.
Here.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. And Alderman Wynn.
Here.
And I'm here, too.
Okay, and I believe Alderman Ru Simmons is joining us. I didn't hear her say "here," but I'm pretty sure she'll be with us. All right, well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the June 8th, Monday Evanston City Council meeting. We've got a lot on the agenda this evening, and a lot going on in the world. The last couple of meetings, we've given an update on the pandemic. Can I ask everybody just to make sure you're... All right, it sounds like everybody's muted now. A lot has changed.
Mr. Mayor, would you... Mr. Mayor, sorry for the interruption. Could you speak just a little bit louder or come a little closer to your mic?
All right.
And I was just gonna do a motion to suspend the rules.
Yes, thank you. Alderman Rabel, can you do that, please?
Okay, so I move that we suspend the rules to allow us to proceed with the meeting remotely using the Zoom software system.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we are gonna conduct this meeting virtually because we're still in a state of emergency due to the coronavirus pandemic. A lot has changed since we met two weeks ago. We still have the coronavirus. It continues, but it's been eclipsed, rightly so, by the outrage over George Floyd's murder at the knees of a police officer in Minneapolis. It's a video that anybody with a heart watching is utterly just shocked by, equally upsetting. Other officers were on the scene and watched and did nothing. It was a vivid reminder, and the latest reminder, that police brutality does exist in this country and that racism continues to disproportionately discriminate and inflict social, economic, educational, and health injustices and disparities on our black friends and neighbors and families. Citizens, as we've seen, are rightly fed up. And as difficult as the moment is, it is an opportunity to either remove that which is not working or build up that which is. In Evanston, we will continue to listen. We will continue to think critically. We will continue to work to root out institutional and systematic racism in our government structures. This is not just something that we're starting to embark on now because...
Can't hear.
Can you not hear me still? Okay, give me one second. Can you hear me better now? Is it just... Is it better? I can't...
I can hear you, unless it's anybody else.
What about you, Cicely?
I could hear you. There was just a little feedback, but it's gone now.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, did you guys even catch anything I said up front?
I did.
I didn't hear anything.
Okay, so let me just start over. A lot has changed since we met two weeks ago. The coronavirus pandemic continues, but it has been replaced by outrage over George Floyd's murder at the knees of a police officer in Minneapolis. A video hard to watch by any human being with a heart. Equally upsetting, other officers on the scene watched and did nothing. It was a vivid reminder, and the latest reminder, that police brutality exists in this country and that racism continues to disproportionately discriminate and inflict social, economic, educational, and health disparities and injustices on our black friends and neighbors. Citizens are rightly fed up. As difficult as this moment is, it is an opportunity to either remove that which is not working or build up that which is. In Evanston, we will listen. We will think critically, and we will continue to root out institutional and systematic racism in our government structures. This is not something that we're embarking on here, just embarking on here in Evanston. This is a continuation of work many have done before us, even if we still have too many inequities within our community. It is this city council that's before you tonight that has, over the last three years, established an Equity and Empowerment Commission in 2017, established a Citizen Police Complaint Assessment Committee in 2017 to improve the process by which complaints are filed and heard. It's this council that established the Alternatives to Arrest Committee in September 2017 to find local alternatives to arrest for misdemeanor offenses and reduce the number of young adults that have a difficult time finding a job later in life. It's this council that expanded its youth and young adult group to focus on workforce development opportunities. It's this council that implemented the body cameras in 2018 to all field units and patrol, traffic, problem-solving teams, and special operations groups. They extended that then to include the members of the Detective Bureau, Juvenile Bureau, and School Resource Officers. It's this council that issued a racial equity resolution in 2019. It's this council that created a reparations fund, this part of the 2020 budget, committing to utilize tax revenue collected from the sales of recreational cannabis to support the $10 million fund. This council that facilitated ongoing community dialogue about issues of race and equity through the city's Art Council, Shorefront, and the Evanston Community Foundation. This council that has partnered with Evanston Cradle to Career to provide city staff with beyond diversity training. Despite all of these efforts, the work is far from done. Several residents have expressed concern about a police takedown, that's a use of force, that occurred with a 20-year-old blackmail here in Evanston in the last two weeks. The body-worn police video has been released, and the city is committed to conducting a thorough investigation of the incident to determine, one, whether proper protocol was followed by the police, and, two, whether procedures need to be changed for similar situations. In light of George Floyd's murder, I have committed the city to undertake a 90-day evaluation of our police use of force policies as part of an Obama Foundation pledge made by mayors across this country. This will include engaging the community by including a diverse range of inputs, experiences, and stories in review, reporting the findings to the community and the Obama Foundation, and reforming police use of force policies based on these findings. Due to the many police-related questions our residents are naturally asking of the alderman, of myself, of the city manager, we have created a Police Policy and Training Frequently Asked Question Page on the city's website. This can be found at thecityovevinston.org/policefaq. This literally just went up about an hour ago. We'll continue to add questions here, but it's here where you can find questions that cover topics like whether chokeholds and strangleholds are allowed in Evanston. The answer is no. Whether use of force incidents in Evanston must be reported? The answer is yes. Whether there's a duty and an expectation for officers in Evanston to intervene if another officer is not following protocol? The answer is yes. We will continue to add questions and answers based on questions that we are asked. Today, I forwarded to the city council the names of nine residents to serve on the Citizen Police Review Commission. A city commission tasked to review citizen police complaints and provides a systematic means to achieve continuous improvement in citizen and police interactions. This was a tough call because almost 90 residents, the most we've ever had, applied for any board or committee, applied beyond this board, and everyone seemed highly qualified. In the end, I selected a group of Evanstonians who I believe will be fair-minded, thoughtful, objective, and as a group is diverse in terms of age, and gender, and race, and education, and occupation. In closing, I think it's important that the governing body actively listen to what our residents are telling us, what they're asking us, and what they're demanding of us. At this time, we need to listen. It's why many of our elected officials, including myself, attended the Evanston Fights Back... Excuse me, the Evanston Fights for Black Lives March and Rally on last Sunday, May 31st, that drew a reported 10,000 people, according to news reports. It's why some of us attended the White Coats for Black Lives Vigil at Amita St. Francis Hospital this past week, and it's why several of us attended the Evanston United Black Family Rally held yesterday in Fountain Square to support black lives, organized by the NAACP, Black Evanston Men, the Chessmen, Calpa Alpha Psi, Evanston Chapter, and Soul Creation. Kudos to those organizers, including Dr. Reverend Neighbors, Omar Brown, Jude Lade, and Jared Davis. It is these voices that have organized and begun the conversation. It is these voices that we must seek guidance on what Evanston can do to begin to heal deep wounds and advance equity in our community for black families and neighbors. It is in this light that I am delighted that tonight the eight amazing young female members, community members, who organized the Evanston Fights for Black Lives March and Rally, which was last week ago Sunday, accepted an invitation to address the Evanston City Council this evening. Leona Wallace and team, welcome. I offer you the floor for the next 10 minutes.
Hello, I'm unable to start my video, sorry.
Me as well.
All right, so give us one second. Luke Stowe, I imagine you're on the line. Can you just help and get us set up?
I am, Mayor. I'm prompting them to start their video.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor, is there anyone else that needs their video started?
I do.
I do as well.
I do as well.
Maya Robinson also does.
Okay, anyone else?
Julia Show does, too.
Thank you.
Nice to see you all.
I believe that's everyone, Mayor.
Okay, so I don't know which one's gonna take it away first. I turn it over to... Is it Sinobia, are you?
Yes.
All right, welcome, Sinobia.
All right, hi, my name is Sinobia Aiden.
Hi, I'm Maya Robinson.
Hi, I'm Amalia Lawazo.
Hi, I'm Leona Wallace.
I'm Julia Show.
I'm Phoebe Licardo.
Hi, I'm Molly Hartenstein.
Hi, I'm Neil Williams.
Thank you for having us here, and we are Evanston Fight for Black Lives. While we stand here appreciative for this opportunity to speak, we are extremely frustrated that we have 10 minutes to address and provide solutions to issues that have been cultivated for over 400 years. You asked us to share with our community what you think are the most racially systemic issues you, as a city council, need to address, and any suggested solutions. Knowing that this is an irresponsible ask for us to fully cover within 10 minutes, we hope to provide just a tip of the iceberg as to how Evanston is failing its black families through the frames of policing, housing, education, health, employment, and community. In addition, we will elaborate on how the police are used as violent and detrimental means to fix the failures in Evanston's laws and legislature. You asked us to share the racially systemic issues you all, as a city council, need to address. Well, here you go.
In regards to policing, the divide between police and black Evanston residents is clear. Since 2016, black people have made up almost 60% of all arrests, but only take up 17% of our total population. How is this possible? Black people are not more likely to commit crimes than their white counterparts. This is because black communities are underfunded and overpoliced. We are sure that you all have heard of the current national movement that focuses on finding alternatives to police funding and instead focusing more on investing in the community. For decades, we have accepted police to answer calls for events such as drug overdoses or mental health crises. We believe that these should instead be answered by mental health professionals or addiction experts. Police officers are forced to take on the role of social workers, emergency medical personnel, welfare case workers, and more. These calls have all been answered by armed police officers, which leaves room for escalation, violence, and potentially murder. Currently, Minneapolis City Council members are fully disbanding the police and creating a community-oriented, nonviolent public safety. We believe that defunding the police would be a first step in creating a just, safe society.
In regards to housing in a town that prides itself so heavily on its racial diversity, we must address the growing issue of gentrification and the increase in property taxes that are causing Evanston to lose its black population. Evanston's history of encouraging generational wealth has disproportionately displaced its black and brown families. This disparity becomes clear when we see that 62% of white households in Evanston are homeowners compared to black households, which are only 38% of homeowners. This could likely be caused by the financial discrepancies that exist within Evanston as well, due to the fact that the average median income for white families is about $93,000 compared to their black counterparts that make a median amount of $50,000. With these given conditions, it's clear that Evanston cannot sustain its black community. In fact, statistics have shown that Evanston's black population is diminishing slowly. According to U.S. Census data taken in 2000, 22.5% of Evanston's population identified themselves as black compared to an estimated 17% per the last American Community Survey estimate. The money redirected from police department could go towards proper, affordable housing since Evanston has been continuously losing its black residents due to high property taxes. In regards to education, Evanston failed its black youth through our educational system, starting from District 65 all the way to ETHS. This is reflected in a number of ways. In the 2016 report on black student achievement in District 65, 34% of black students entered District 65 with a level of early literacy skills considered kindergarten-ready. In addition to walking in at an educational disadvantage, black students are continually exploited by policing and punishment through discipline referrals and suspensions. One in four black students received an office discipline referral for behavior classified as major in 2015. Our education system fails to recognize that many black students are walking into a space of education with minimal food, home support, or resources to allow them to perform at their best within educational settings. Increasing the cash flow from policing to community services could directly address these challenges. These systemic failures are then further perpetuated as black students head into high school. Based on the 2018-2019 annual achievement report from Evanston Township, white students have a collective mean GPA of 3.35, while their black counterparts have a collective mean GPA of 2.6. Our failure in education bleed into Evanston's current state of policing. Prison should not be the solution to our educational shortcomings through the school-to-prison pipeline, and the presence of resource officers and places that are supposed to be dedicated to learning perpetuate that. Divesting money from the police department into education could ensure that more black students and families have the resources to help diminish existing racial gaps between kindergarteners in District 65.
In regards to health, worldwide, coronavirus has disproportionately affected black people. According to the U.S. Census in Evanston, 34% of coronavirus cases are black residents, although they only take up about 17% of Evanston's population, compared to the 33 white resident cases who take up 59% of the population. This disproportion is increasing, and there is a need for our city to be transparent with these statistics. According to the Harvard School of Public Health, black people have higher rates of diabetes, hypertension, and heart disease than any other group, and black children have a 500% higher death rate from asthma compared to white children. What aid are we providing black residents to improve and maintain their health? There is a need to have this information accessible to our people, in addition to anti-racist bias trainings in hospitals and other healthcare facilities. Where we live determines opportunities for high-quality education, employment, housing, fresh foods, or outdoor spaces, which are all contributors of our health. Our surroundings have a strong influence on our health. It is critical to provide equity in all oppressive institutions to better the health and well-being of our black residents.
In regards to employment, black work is devalued in an economy that was built off of $14 trillion of stolen slave labor. This devaluation has occurred through explicit and implicit segregation, through legal racial oppression, and through racial workplace segregation, all of which Evanston has either historically been a part of or presently perpetuates. Based on 2010 census data, 23.5% of businesses are POC-owned in a city with 43.43% people of color. Moreover, in May of last year, Evanston was celebrating a 2.8% rate of unemployment. However, no matter how low this percentage gets, the truth remains that black residents are unemployed at a higher rate than white residents and, on average, receive a lower salary and less benefits than their white neighbors. That being said, these problems are not unfixable. We can and we should pass policies and create programs that prioritize the needs of Evanston's black community. We can solve these problems and many others by looking at both the community needs and what the city does and can provide. We can close the wealth gap and the business owning gap by investing in black-owned businesses as a community. This can come in the form of grants, loans, and other benefits. A good place to start is with the City of Evanston Reparations Fund. You have projected that $10 million will be created by this process in a matter of 10 years. With the current rate of police funding, about $600 million will be spent on policing in that time. We believe that money is better spent on investing in Evanston's black community, not criminalizing it.
The concerns stated before me have highlighted a larger communal issue of systemic racism and anti-blackness. While we are just scratching the surface, it is clear that Evanston should and needs to start thinking about these issues in order to address the harm it is currently inflicting upon black lives and black families. Even the very name of our city honors a white man who orchestrated a mass genocide of indigenous folks. It is upsetting and painful to see how collectively those in leadership have a very base level of understanding that is slow and ineffective as compared to what we know and what we have had no choice but to know as black youth growing up in America. If we are a community that proclaims we value black lives, it should be a shame that Evanston consistently ignores the collective voice of its black residents. It is a shame that if we value community, the Fifth Ward, which houses the majority of Evanston's black residents, is relying on barely standing community centers while also being one of the most heavily policed areas following the Fourth and Eighth Wards. If we care about community, we should be funding programs for children before we fund the very people that arrest them. It is interesting to watch our elected officials say that they are actively fighting for black lives when I see my black peers beg to be heard by a system that does not see their black life. When I think about community, I wonder why in 2020 policing alone receives $56 million, accounting for 18% of Evanston's budget, while community development, health, parks and recreation, and the library in total only account for 12% of the budget. Again, it is clear that Evanston would rather fund a system that is founded on anti-blackness and support areas of our community that are in dire need of assistance. We demand 100% transparency in the selection of elected officials, specifically with the appointment of the city manager. We encourage everyone to vote to protect the communal hiring process and vote against the amendment proposed by the mayor later in this meeting. Before we leave, we also demand to know when our first meeting of many more meetings will be because we have no intention of leaving today satisfied. We will not be satisfied until we begin to see real change. We also encourage the members of city council, the mayor, and the city manager to join us on Wednesday in Evanston Fight for Black Lives Defunding 101, a conversation that surrounds what defunding police looks like in Evanston. So, I want to ask, when you think about community, do you include my black life when you are not mentioning our self-proclaimed diversity? And if so, how can we truly call ourselves a community when black folks included are not being protected and loved? What does it truly look like to fight for black lives?
Thank you, thank you very much. This is very much the beginning, and I will follow up with you, okay, on, you know, how we take this conversation forward and everything. I certainly liked... I like that you came in at 10 minutes, so thank you. Thank you very much for that. Timing is perfect. But you're absolutely right. This is a conversation and thought that requires a lot more than 10 minutes. So, this is the beginning of that. I will follow up with you guys, with others in the community, as we put together a series of conversations that we're gonna have on these different areas. And we are, again, I think you can look at our city council. Our city council, I believe, very much reflects the diversity of our city, and we care very much about everybody in our city, and we're gonna continue to work on it. I realize it's not happening fast enough, but I will just tell you from my perspective, the voices are being heard, they're loud, we understand, and if it can happen anywhere, it can happen here in Evanston in terms of making changes. So, we are gonna work on that. So, thank you, thank you very much. We're now... I've got two more, I've got a couple more, and you're welcome to stay here if you guys wanna stay for the meeting or drop off at any time. Couple other updates under mayor announcements, and then we're gonna move to the city manager. I just wanna give a real quick update on the coronavirus. There's good news and there's bad news, as there always seems to be. The good news is that our seven-day moving average, which if you remember from former report outs, used to be 15, we were as high as 15 cases a day. Our now seven-day moving average is 2.6 cases a day. Today, we had zero new cases and zero deaths, and so that's really positive. Again, I don't want anybody to get complacent. The virus is still out there. It's imperative that we all continue to follow the guidelines of the public health authorities. Our overall numbers, if you're interested, we have 741 confirmed cases here in Evanston, and we have 57 deaths. The bad news is those 57 deaths, right, which were community members here in Evanston, it's 7.7% fatality rate relative to the number of confirmed cases. So, that's pretty high. Our number-one priority continues to be our senior living facilities, where they're at the greatest risk. So, that's just a real quick update on the coronavirus. We do have two proclamations that I'm really pleased to announce today. One is Juneteenth month, and I just wanna share with everybody because I think it's important for those that don't know what Juneteenth is. This occurred when Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring that slaves in the Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the Thirteenth Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States. And whereas word about the signing of the proclamation was delayed some two and a half years to June 19th, 1865, and reaching authorities and African-Americans in South and southwestern the United States, whereas Emancipation Day observations are held on different days in different states in the South and Southwest and in other parts of the nation. Whereas June 19th has a special meaning to African-Americans and is called "Juneteenth", combining the words "June" and "19th," and has been celebrated by African-American community for over 150 years. Whereas Evanston Juneteenth celebration events will occur both online, in a virtual event format, and informally in the community through activities, families, and friends... Through activities, families and friends can participate in from the comfort and safety of their home. It is too bad because, had it not been for the pandemic, this was going to be a big parade and a big celebration in the Fifth Ward. Kamone Hendricks has been very involved in organizing this with other people here in our community. So, it will be virtual this year, and we'll come back, hopefully, in person next year. So, now, therefore, I, Stephen Howard Hagary, the mayor of Evanston, do hereby proclaim June 2020, Juneteenth month, in the city of Evanston, and urge all our residents to participate in the events and become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African-American history and in the heritage of our nation and our city. One of the big folks that was involved in the Juneteenth celebration also happened to be Hecky Powell, who we commemorated and celebrated last year. The second proclamation, that is also another really important one here in the month, is declaring June 2020 Pride Month. As everyone knows, Evanston is a welcoming city, allowing equality for all of our residents. And whereas 51 years ago, June 1969, patrons and supporters of the Stonewall Inn in New York City staged an uprising to resist harassment and discriminatory laws and practices against lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual LGBTQIA community. The riots and protests marked the beginning of the modern LGBTQIA movement. And whereas the city of Evanston is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all of its citizens and preventing... and preventing discrimination and bullying based on sexual orientation and gender identity. Whereas the City of Evanston is strengthened by the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of our city. And whereas nationwide, four out of 10 LGBTQIA youth say the community in which they live is not accepting of LGBTQIA people. LGBTQIA youth are two times as likely as their peers to say they have been physically assaulted. And 68% of youth say they hear negative messages about LGBTQIA from elected leaders. And whereas it is imperative that the young people of the City of Evanston, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders. Now therefore I, Stephen Howard Hagerty, mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim June 2020 as Pride Month in the City of Evanston and encourage all people to recognize the enduring efforts and ongoing contributions of the LGBTQIA communities within our city. Sadly, again, because of the pandemic, they aren't having the big outdoor festival that was being planned in southeast Evanston for Pride Month. But we look forward hopefully to a year where all can continue the hard work of slowing the spread and we can develop a vaccine and get rid of this coronavirus. We can get back to these types of important community celebrations. Lastly, I just want to acknowledge the passing of a community member who was one that was regularly on, you know, these types of calls or in our city council chambers. And that was the passing of Jessica Feldman. Jessica was a force for the improvement of the lives of Evanstonians for 60 years. And she passed away this past week at the age of 88. She was a, a member of the Mather. And she had been diagnosed with cancer late, late in December. There was a beautiful obituary memorial of her in the Evanston Now this week. So I won't go in, I won't go into her whole life. But it was, it was a remarkable life that she lived. She made a big, big difference in our community and at the state and the national level with her political activism. So please keep Jessica Feldman in your, in her family with your thoughts and your prayers. So that ends the mayor announcements today. I'm now going to turn it over to the city manager, the interim city manager for any public announcements that she has.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you. I just wanted to make a couple of quick announcements tonight about some things that we're planning to reopen as we continue down the pathway of phase, I forgot what phase we're in, phase two, phase three? I think we're in phase three. We have some community centers starting to come online this month. And we also have started parking enforcement again. So for those of you who have been enjoying the lack of parking enforcement for the last few months, that is resumed, that has resumed. And I know that there are some warning tickets that have been issued for the past week just to give people a chance to adjust to this new phase. And we'll start issuing regular citations and resuming of regular operations on parking enforcement in the next week or so. So with that, we are going to have a fuller discussion about reopening plans at the June 22nd meeting. But everything else we've talked about last, the last meeting two weeks ago about beaches and camps and things like that. So we're slowly but surely starting to get all of these ducks in a row so that we can start running our regular city operations under the guidelines of Phase Three from the governor. So we're excited about some of the things we're going to be able to do. And we're looking forward to the next phase when we can do some more things, whenever that may be. I also wanted to make a quick comment about the city manager's search process. I know this has been a topic of discussion over the course of the last couple of weeks. And I just wanted to give my opinion that a public process is something that I value. I've been here for 16 years and I know that a public process and public participation is at the core of what Evanston and who Evanston is. So I just wanted to give my feedback on that and whatever city council direction is, I respect and appreciate. And I know that you'll do what you think is best for the community. So, thank you.
Great, thank, thank you, Erica. We're now going to move to city clerk announcements.
Yes, I have a few announcements. I will start off with a public comment. We have comments received from Leslie Williams, Beth Stare, Mike Vasco, and Debbie Tillman in summation. Those comments are in support of a public process in the search for a new city manager. And then we have comments from Kelly Marcel and Kimberly Holmes-Ross that are in support of, you know, skipping the public process and hiring Ms. Storey. Separately, I want to note two things. So we have, the court's office has an event coming up on June 16th at 6:00 PM on policing and race in Evanston. Our speakers will be Chief Cook, Mayor Puar, and Chris Paul Harris, who's a Northwestern professor of African-American Studies. We also have a few other guests that will be joining the panel and will be announced shortly. Folks in the community can find more information about that on our Facebook page tomorrow. But again, the event is June 16th at 6:00 PM. All right. I want to be able to share my screen. Can I just have to make sure that that's a... Okay. So also today, about a year ago, the city, the mayor Hagerty put forward a proposal that changed policies with FOIA. And at that time, the council requested that there be an annual report on FOIA. And so we are, the clerk's office put this together to give a brief status update on FOIA. Is my screen visible to everyone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the current, let's move this. So this is the current state of FOIA. This year, we are seeing a downtick in FOIA requests. We have 507 requests year-to-date with about 1,200 projected for the entire year, which is down from our peak in 2019. So on last year, the council adopted a proposal that was put forward by the mayor to name additional FOIA officers. So that was May 28th of last year. So we did about a year analysis of that point, a year from the 28th of last year and a year since that point. So from May 28th, 2018 to May 28th, 2019, when the proposal was adopted, there are about five and a half requests per day with an average of 11 days to close. Since this new proposal that names additional FOIA officers, we receive roughly the same number of FOIA requests per day with an average of 16 days to close. So we, the FOIA statute allows 10 days. Under the multi-step release process, there's an 11-day release time period, average release period. And now under the siloed release, the council adopted a policy that named the police department their own FOIA officer and the law department their own FOIA officer. There is now a 16-day average closure time. So it has actually gone up. Begun with the additional FOIA officers, we actually answer FOIA slower. With pending requests, there were 67 pending requests on May 28th of 2019. Currently, there are 111 pending requests under this new system. The police department alone makes up a large majority of the, not majority, a plurality of the FOIA requests, with 32% of all FOIA requests going to the police department. Following in line is the legal department and information and the IT department. The bulk of those FOIA requests to IT and legal are for records contained in emails. The police department, those records tend to be police reports, various bits of data and body and dash cam videos from the police department. The police department in the last period had about an 11-day average to close. It's currently 12 days, not a major difference there. Although the FOIA statute allows 10 days at max. The legal department receives about one FOIA request per day with an average of 11. That was for the period before the new FOIA policy. They currently receive a few more FOIA, about two FOIA requests per day with an average of 18 days to close a request. I do want to note some notable PAC determinations. There was a determination, and this is linked so folks can read the full determination. We'll make sure this is available on the website as well as it's been shared on the Evanston City Clerk's Facebook page. But if you, within the first one, the determination was in favor of the city because the requester made a request in question format, you know, somewhat of a technicality. The FOIA statute requires that requesters request records and not ask questions. And so in this case, the Requester misworded the FOIA request as a question and not a records request. So that is, for FOIA requesters, make sure you're asking for records and not just a question. Another notable FOIA determination is that the FOIA officer is to receive all responsive records from requests. What this means is that the PAC office has determined that the FOIA officer is to keep a record of all responsive documents released through FOIA, which includes body camera footage, anything else that is released through FOIA. And the full report can be read through that link. And lastly, donor records. So if you are a private citizen donating to a public body, the PAC office here in Evanston, or for Evanston's, determined that donor records are public information and to be released. So these are some notable PAC determinations, you know, involving the City of Evanston over the last year. And I think these are good things for all of us to keep in mind, especially the first one for requesters, to make sure that you're wording your request as a records request and not a question. And then lastly, helpful resources. If folks want to make a FOIA request, you can go to evanston.nexrequest.com to make a FOIA request. You can also visit the Evanston City Clerk's webpage to reach out to us if you have any questions or concerns with an ongoing FOIA request. As well as if you feel that the city has improperly denied a FOIA request, you may reach out to the Illinois Attorney General and file a request for review. It's a fairly straightforward process. It's, it's not very difficult and it is helpful for all of us to learn. I just want to make a, stop, just here. I'll take any questions if there are any questions. But I do want to make a note that it is important that we have a, with FOIA, a multi-step process, especially in these times where you don't want the police department being the only folks who have control over the release of their records. Having a multi-step process ensures checks and balances. I think this is something the council needs to review, especially if this council is committed to the things that young ladies put forward earlier and ensuring that our police department is held accountable as well as the rest of the city. There should be a multi-step process.
Thank, thank you, Clerk Reed. And let's go ahead on that presentation that you did. Let's put that in the next Rules Committee agenda so we get that out there publicly and then the council can have a conversation about and questions and things they have. Okay?
Okay.
All right, great. So Alderman Wilson, yes?
Mayor, I think in light of the city manager's, interim city manager's comments, I think it would make some sense to perhaps address that issue. And it sounds like she is specifically saying that she would prefer a, a public process as opposed to what we've got on the table for this special order, which is just a resolution appointing her. So I think it would be appropriate, I'd like to move that we withdraw that special order and go back to getting that process on track. Very, you know, a process on track. So I move that we withdraw the special order.
Okay.
There's a second? All right, so there's a second to that. Alderman Rainey, you're muted. Are you muted, Ann?
Ann, you're muted.
I know, I know, I know. I, in discussing this, I would highly recommend we move this discussion to the Rules Committee.
After, you mean going forward, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
Alderman suffered in, Fleming?
All right, just so we're clear, we're going to hold off on moving forward with a search?
No.
No, I'm, I'm moving that we, we have a resolution on the table or for presentation tonight to appoint Ms. Storey as the, as the city manager. She's just told us that she would prefer to have a public process. And I think, and you know, respecting both the process and what she's suggesting, I think we should withdraw the resolution.
All right, the public also said they want a public process. And I think they've done expediently. So when are we going to start? When is Gov HR going to start doing?
Excuse me, excuse me. I, I was discussing this, that we, I'm recommending that we move this to the Rules Committee so that we can discuss that.
Alderman Rainey?
The Rules Committee is where, the Rules Committee is where the city manager's search process is discussed. It would not have been such chaos if we had done that in the first place. For those of you who have never done it, take some time and look at the history. It is a very smooth process. Go to, go to your council history and look at it. It's very simple. Look at it, let's get it done. Go to your, go to the Rules Committee and we'll sit there and we'll work on it.
Okay, so again, my question is, are we going to do nothing with the search until the next scheduled Rules Committee meeting?
It could be next Monday. I don't want to eat on Tuesday.
If we're going to do, if we're going to move it to the Rules Committee, I would say we have the Rules Committee as soon as possible.
I think it's next Monday. I think there's a scheduled Rules Committee meeting. Is there not?
Hey Erica, can you look, can you look into that and let us know? There's a couple other comments and questions, so. Do you know if there's a Rules Committee meeting this Monday?
Our next Rules Committee meeting right now is scheduled for the first Monday in July. But Rules Committee can be scheduled at any point in time that the council so chooses.
This is not an emergency.
So...
So let me go, oh, sorry, I had a couple other hands up. So let me just go, I've got Cicely, then Melissa, then back to you, Don.
All right, so I don't really care where we discuss it. If it was supposed to be Rules Committee, then I think it should have been Rules Committee two weeks ago. And then I would say we should have Rules Committee next week as also we heard from our legal counsel who said there are several things we need to have for the Rules Committee we haven't added and I don't know how long. My other question then would be, if we're having Rules Committee whenever and we're discussing the search, that we please have Gov HR available there to give us an update on, you know, remind us on what the search process is, talk about kind of what the national climate is. Last week at our last meeting, I think there was a lot of suggestion that this was, you know, not a good time to do a search, but we did not hear from the professionals who we hired to tell us what they're finding on the national level regarding the search. So I think that we need to have Gov HR at the meeting, giving us an update. We need to go over our timeline, what we paid them for. And I would also suggest that we have the Rules Committee very soon and not in July because if we remember, Ms. Storey's contract is going to expire. We have lots of things we need to discuss and it's better to get this started ASAP than, you know, sooner than later.
I, I agree. I would move that we have a Rules Committee next Monday, start it after next Monday. And add this and other, other items that we need. Alderman, when? And then I might go to Alderman, Bruce Simmons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Fleming, I'm having a hard time hearing you. I don't know whether other people are as well. Your, your, for this meeting, your voice is particularly soft.
Oh, do you want me to repeat what I said?
Well, I, I was able to hear what you were saying. But it, it, my neighbor has a really loud air conditioner, so if you guys could...
I will try to speak up. Thank you for that. I will try to speak up, thank you for that.
Thank you. I agree with Alderman Fleming. I think that we should have the meeting next Monday. I think we should have hr.gov there. And I, and I think we should just fast-track this and, and move this forward. Since that's what Erica Storley has, has said that would be acceptable to her, I think that's acceptable to the council and the rest of the community as well.
Alderman, Bruce Simmons. Okay, all right, so Alderman Wilson. Oh, I can't hear you if you're muted if you want to.
I was just going to say, I mean, you might want to check forum and then also Gov HR's availability. I'm not sure that I could be on Mondays. What is the date? Maybe I can, I'm sorry.
Fifteenth?
Fifteen. Fifteen. Yeah, I mean, I get, if everyone else can be there, then it's fine.
I didn't actually hear Erica say that.
Okay, Alderman Wilson.
Okay, so I'd made the motion that we withdraw this item.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so A2 has been withdrawn. All right, we're going to move now to, and then we'll set up. Erica, if you can go ahead and just make sure we've got forum and you've got Gov HR. We'll do a Rules Committee next Monday night. We'll post that, okay?
Thank you, I will do a forum check. I just wanted to note that because this is only one week's notice, it's probably unlikely that we'd be able to prepare any materials for any additional items that may be in the queue. But we'll see what we can do about anything else we could add.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So now we're going to move to public, public comment. We have 21 people that are signed up for public comment this evening. So I'm going to. All right, everybody's going to have two minutes today for public, for public comment. First up, we've got, and then it looks like we've got some people that want to talk about A2 as well as city manager. So if you don't want to talk about that, you can just drop off or, or if you do, you can. So first up, we've got Alex Morgan, then Leslie Shad, then Rick Marsh. Are you on the line, Alex?
I am here, good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Great. I was about to read our letter that I think most of you should have received or at least I know we sent to the clerk this afternoon. It was about the, you know, making sure we move forward with a public process when it comes to the hiring of the next city manager. I'm not going to read through the whole letter as you just withdrew the motion, but I think it's worth noting that, you know, in this short period of time, we got at least 340 Evanston residents who signed on to this letter with us. Has the support, you know, of a roundtable editorial, a Dear Evanston editorial. Central Street Neighbors had their own letter. I think it's just very clear, this afternoon, we had 50, at least 50 people join us at the Civic Center for a rally in support of a public process. And I think it just is really critical that for the most important full-time position in the city that we have a full, fair, and open public process. And that's the call of the Opal Board of Directors that I was, you know, sent here by this evening to represent. And I think it's, it's the view of at least a significant number of Evanston residents. And I think in speaking to your average Evanston resident, they would probably share that view as well. This is not about, you know, any particular individual who's serving in this role. I think if she's the best fit, you have to weigh that with your other candidates like you would when hiring for, for any job. So we appreciate you taking this step back. We hope it will be a full, fair, and open process and we look forward to following along from here.
Thank you, Alex. Next up, we've got Leslie Shad, then Rick Marsh, then Betsy Wilson.
Thank you so much. So I'm Leslie Shad with Natural Habitat Evanston. Sorry. I recognize that there are critical discussions ongoing on race, justice, and progress and very hopeful turn of events and hopefully progress. There's not much calm space to consider trees, I recognize that. But I do want to give you an update on the fund for Evanston Trees. It was set up over the weekend, about 15 people have donated or pledged $7,700. It just demonstrates that residents care. It's only the very beginning, most of these donations came in today. We cannot fully fund elm treatment. I just want to be absolutely clear about that. That's not, I don't really believe that we can do that, but, you know, we want to raise as much as we can to help trees. I do want to mention on the map that is attempting to sort out which trees would be deferred. I just encourage you to figure out how that actually would work. Would the city mail or hand out notifications to give residents a chance to pay for their trees? Will the city accept funds and provide treatment if it's paid for? Is there fungicide and staff time for that? And then will neighbors be informed if the trees are not going to be treated or can neighbors pay? If these large segments of Evanston, if you look at the map, there are big areas of Evanston that could truly be devastated if all these trees die in terms of property values, sheltering from heat and wind. You know, in Australia, there are recent heat waves that have woken them up to climate change and they're actually shrinking building footprints to zone for bigger trees. So I just want to say it's not crazy to be thinking about preserving your big trees. I also want to say that treating the elms is the fiscally conservative thing to do. It costs six times more to bring down these trees than to treat them. So it's risky to decide to risk having these big trees come down. And if we want to reduce layoffs, let's do less outsourcing. Let's inject the trees ourselves. People don't care much about big trees until they're gone. This decision is not reversible. When the trees get diseased, they come down. We cannot restore these big trees. That's it from me. Thank you, everyone, for letting me talk.
Thank you, Leslie. Next up, we've got Rick Marsh and then Betsy Wilson and Matthew Mitchell. Welcome, Rick.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor. And the city council. Hey, I'm calling here on behalf of the Community Alliance for Better Government, which I've been a part of, but also as a 36-year resident of Evanston. I was glad to see tonight that the motion was rescinded for moving forward with the city manager search. I just remember that, you know, we value your input was something that we were, that was shared with the community and the survey was to be, you know, sent out. So quite obviously, we were all taken aback when the plan was to kind of move forward here without going through the process and without, you know, getting input, you know, from the city. You know, with the Community Alliance for Better Government, what we're trying to do is develop relationships at the senior level of Evanston leadership. And Mayor, met with you, Erica, you know, we were close to setting up a meeting there, you know, to really be aligned and kind of just talk through how we can serve each other, you know, get community input, have relationships that aren't adversarial, where we work together to solve some of the issues that, you know, that we all face. So from that standpoint, again, we were just taken aback a bit with the move to, to move forward there. But we've got to give residents the opportunity to give input. That's a part of transparency. We're seeing that, you know, all around the country right now of citizens wanting to be a part of the process. So again, glad that this is moved into a Rules Committee. Hopefully, and I'm sure, public input will be a part of that process. So from that standpoint, I'm pleased. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, thank you, Rick. Next up, we've got Betsy Wilson, then Matthew Mitchell, then Judith Treadway. Welcome, Betsy.
And thank you, Mayor Hagerty. I appreciate, Mayor, your acknowledgement of the dire problems of racism that we have in this country and in our community. And for that reason, I'm particularly glad that the council has listened to the voice of the people and has decided to conduct a nationwide search that is open to the public for the most powerful city staff position. Especially now, it's important that we open the position to applications from people of color and that we strongly consider applications from people of color and we seek out qualified applications from people of color. And I hope and trust that the council, in making their ultimate hiring decision, will consider our expressed commitment to equity. So I appreciate that. I appreciate that we're moving to an open process. I'd also, Mayor, like to thank you for your expressed commitment to police reform. I think we've seen in our nation and in our community that we have a problem. And it's a problem that burdens people of color disproportionately. And I'm glad that we're attending to it because it seems like we've paid more lip service than actual attention and effort to it in the past. And purported reform efforts have been slow-walked. So I look forward to seeing progress and expeditious progress. I also look forward to communication from the city with the CMP, which is a grassroots organization that, as you all know, has been working on these issues for many, many years and has expertise from throughout the community and understands these issues as well or better than anybody else. So if, as I know you all want, if we want the reform process to be viewed as credible and sincere, I think it's vital that we include the existing players and the existing experts in the community in that process. So I look forward to seeing our commitment as a community to our expressed values. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Next up, we've got Matthew Mitchell, Judith Treadway, then Jackson Poller. Welcome, Matthew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Matthew Mitchell. I'm a resident of the 8th Ward and I served as the Chair of the City of Evanston's CPCAC Committee, the Citizen Police Complaint Assessment Committee, from September 2017 through December 2018. CPCAC was made up of nine Evanston citizens who spent more than a year and hundreds of hours evaluating the process that Evanston uses to address civilian complaints against police officers. CPCAC's final recommendation was made to city council in December 2018. The overview of the recommendation was that the city of Evanston does a poor job of civilian oversight and involvement in the police complaint process. CPCAC recommended four steps be taken to address four specific concerns and to come into accord with best national practices. As of today, none of those four steps have been implemented and only one has been initiated. Kudos to the establishment of the Citizen Review Board. The four recommendations of the CPCAC Committee were, one, to establish an intake process independent of the police department; two, to dissolve the Citizen Police Advisory Committee and implement a new Citizen Review Board; three, to create an alternative dispute resolution program, a mediation program; and four, to hire a part-time independent police auditor. Each of these recommendations was made to address a specific community concern. CPCAC was not tied to any specific solution as long as the underlying concerns were addressed. But to this day, the city has done nothing to address any of those concerns. The one step the city has begun, the establishment of a non-binding civilian review board, creates transparency to the process. That's the one piece of the puzzle that a civilian review board fixes. It remains to be seen whether our civilian review board will be able to provide that transparency. The Evanston Police Department does have a good internal process for investigating complaints against police officers, but the valid criticism is that it's insular, that it's not transparent, and that there's an appearance of bias towards the police. And with an external process to provide checks and balances to the existing system, Evanston can do a lot better job. Yesterday, at the United Black Family Rally, Chief Cook addressed the crowd and said that the police in Evanston did not answer to the mayor, they did not answer to the city manager, but to the people of Evanston. As of right now, there's no structural oversight of the police by the people of Evanston. Structural oversight of the police department from outside the police department is woefully inadequate. It's the city council's responsibility to enact structural reform, structural changes, to enact civilian oversight of the police in our city. Evanston has fallen short and needs to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you for your service on that committee. Judith Treadway, we've got next, then Jackson Poller, then Kimberly Ross Holmes.
Mayor, I don't think Ms. Treadway is on this call.
Okay, how about Jackson? You on the call, Jackson Poller?
Yep, can you hear me?
All right, we can hear you, welcome.
Thank you. Jackson Poller, first forward. I was preempted by Alderman Wilson with a lot of what I was going to say. I was going to ask for SB 2 to be withdrawn. So all I'll add is that simply going forward with Gov HR doesn't necessarily mean that the process will be sufficiently public and that I hope this council keeps in mind that the public must be at the forefront the entire time and that we are not an afterthought. And secondly, very briefly, I'm grateful for the masterclass in creating tension and speaking truth to power that the young woman gave at the beginning of this meeting. I hope that the city will put its money where its mouth is, so to speak, and listen to the community and actually take meaningful action on structural police reform. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackson. Kimberly Ross Holmes, Sandy Wilson, then Kira Kelly. We have Kimberly Ross Holmes.
Hey, good evening, I'm here.
Oh, good evening, Kim.
Hi, I'm from the 2nd Ward and I have a statement on the record and on file. And I guess in light of tonight's events, I will wait until after the Rules Committee to make my statement. But I appreciate the time and I look forward to hearing later. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. About Sandy Wilson?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. My name is Sandy Wilson and I live in the 1st Ward. And I was here tonight representing Reclaim Evanston. And I am very encouraged by the withdrawing of and moving to the Rules Committee, taking care of the city manager position. So I'm very encouraged by that. And at a time when Evanston and the nation is trying to come to terms with our long history of structural racism, it's a good thing that we are moving in this direction. And I'm glad that the city council is reflecting a better mindset about this as opposed to being disconnected with what is happening today. And so I am grateful that this will be brought up with the Rules Committee. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Sandy. Next up, we've got Kira Kelly, then Laurie Keen, and then Allison Sloan. We have Kira.
I don't believe so, Mayor.
All right, how about Laurie Keen?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you, welcome, Laurie.
Thank you. In light of the withdrawal of moving forward with the city manager selection, I, most of my comments were geared towards that. To Ms. Wilson's point, she said you were, she was glad that you listened to the voice of the people, but the reality is you listened to the voice of Erica Storley, who's the interim city manager. And that was why the motion was withdrawn. And I very much doubt you were listening to the voice of the people. I was impressed, just beyond words, with the young women who spoke at the beginning of the meeting. They were smart, passionate voices. And I think this was their first foray with city council. And being discouraged by the lack of time and sort of the lip service that they're hearing and seeing in Evanston. To Matt Mitchell's point in the CPCAC and the four steps and ignoring all of what's recommended by the boards and commissions in Evanston is an ongoing theme. FOIA and police reform, the FOIA, you moved the FOIA responsibilities of FOIA, you know, you dispersed that to two other departments and now it takes longer and there's less efficiency, including giving power for FOIA to the police. You gutted a social services program that served this population of black and brown and underserved in Evanston by firing Kevin Brown when communities across the United States are defunding police departments and funding exactly these services. So when we're talking about, as Matt Mitchell said, it was insular, it was not transparent, there was evidence of bias. The chief of police shared personal information via Snapchat and still has his job. Kevin Brown got parking tickets in the city parking lot on city vehicles and was fired. So I ask you to, to do better, to heed the voices of these young, smart women from the beginning of this call and to please stop ignoring the public and please stop keeping these Zoom meetings as covert and, you know, unattended as possible. You just absolutely have to do better.
Thank you, Laurie. We've got Allison Sloan up next, then Virginia Mann, then Ally Honey.
Mayor, I don't believe Ms. Sloan is on the call.
Okay, how about Virginia Mann?
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Welcome.
First of all, I'd like to say I'm proud to be an Evanston resident. I'm proud to be part of a community where thousands march peacefully to protect, to protest against the horrific murder, the murder of George Floyd. I'm proud to be part of a community that believes in equality and justice for all. And I'm proud to have a city government that works hard to find solutions to these problems. Tonight, however, I'm speaking about our elm trees. I appreciate the efforts of so many people, including staff and council members, to find solutions to this problem. I appreciate especially the Evanston Community Foundation and Citizens Greener Evanston to find support from the community for this. I urge you all to vote yes to inject all of our elm trees. Evanston residents rightfully expect that our trees will be injected every three years. That has been the city policy that was, law that was adopted nearly 10 years ago. It's reasonable that they expect that their tax dollars be used to care for our public property, including streets, sewers, parks, garages, and yes, even our trees. The idea that trees should be injected based on staff's perceived income of a resident or a particular neighborhood is antithetical to all that we stand for. When we start deciding which services residents receive, which parks should be cared for, which streets should be paved, whose garbage should be picked up, or whose trees should be injected based on staff's perception of a person's income or the neighborhood they live in, you are setting an extremely dangerous precedent. A precedent that I actually believe is illegal, but should prove not to be in the courts. It's a very dangerous concept, and it is against everything that our city has proudly stood for for decades. The bottom line on this topic, as I've said to each of you several times, is that we either spend the money to inject the elm trees, which has been the Evanston city policy for, in some one fashion or another, for 15 years, or we change city policy and decide to cut them down. There's not an alternative. Elm trees die within about eight weeks after, once they are infected with the disease. So we're going to spend this summer either injecting them or cutting them down. I hope that you will take that concept of fair and equal justice for all, not just to our civil rights, but also to our rights as Evanston residents. Everyone in the city deserves to have their tree injected. It doesn't matter what their income is, it doesn't matter where they live. We need equal treatment under the law. If for some reason you choose not to fund this program, then I strongly urge you to reconsider the proposal from the city staff. If we are not going to inject trees, then the loss of trees needs to be spread equally throughout the city based on what trees are most salvageable or most important, not based on staff's perception of what somebody's income is or should be.
Thank you, Virginia.
Please, please inject all the trees for all of Evanston. And thank you all for your hard work during this very difficult time for all of us.
Thank, thank you. All right, next up, we've got Ally Harnett, Nick Davis, then Beth Scares.
All right, can you hear me?
We can hear you, welcome.
The Evanston Voter Initiative was formed as an effort to give the people of Evanston more voice in the decisions that are made that affect every resident of the city. Yes, we are a representative government, and we have an opportunity every four years to say who we want to represent our ward. However, in the interim four years, we can only attempt to reach out to our elected officials and hope they will listen. It has been our experience that sometimes they do, and other times they do not return phone calls, emails, or attend scheduled meetings. Making public comment at an open meeting is one way to make statements, but we have attended countless meetings where the stated pleas of the majority of those speaking were the opposite of what the people on the dais later voted on to do. This is again the case in today's proposed action by Mayor Hagerty to appoint Erica Storley city manager. As others have said before, we are pleased that the motion has been rescinded, but it remains a huge problem that it was even proposed in the first place. Despite many public comments pleading for a transparent and open process, which would be guided by a vision for an equitable Evanston, where the most marginalized voices would be elevated in importance, this council today was going to consider whether it should bypass the decided-upon process and appoint Erica Storley without a national search in public process. We are appalled. The Evanston Voter Initiative joins the many community groups and community members who are demanding an open and transparent process, including a national search to select the next city manager for our city. And we remain ready to propose, collect signatures for, fight in court, and pass any referendum needed to make Evanston a city truly committed to democracy where every resident is represented. As an independent member, resident of the City of Evanston, I would like to make sure that you're aware of the hypocrisy of the setup of the rush process for the city manager selection. At the May 26 City Council meeting, Mayor Hagerty said, and it's in today's packet, that anyone who is willing to leave their jurisdiction in the middle of a crisis is not the type of person I want in the Evanston city manager's seat. Later in the meeting, somebody, and I don't recall who it was, it might have been Mayor Hagerty, also said to the effect that we need to hire Erica quickly or she may have to leave to go to another city. You may not have both of these statements be true concurrently. I sincerely hope that the members of the Rules Committee next week will be able to lay out a transparent process, which should include a national search, a rubric guided by an equity lens, and the maximum possible public input. Do not use COVID-19 as an excuse to avoid a public process. Clearly, we're here now. This is a public meeting happening over Zoom. You've been doing it since March, we're all experts at Zoom now. And it is clearly possible to have public input. We also have email inboxes, I know because I receive so many emails every day, and we are ready to receive that survey that was created in March and never distributed. Do it right, Evanston. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ally. Next up, we've got Nick Davis, then Beth Scares, then Dylan Johnson. Welcome, Nick.
Hey, everybody, Nick Davidson from the 2nd Ward. And I was also going to talk about the appointment of the city manager, which I guess is not an issue at the moment. But I just wanted to echo everybody else's sentiments that we need a more transparent process for people. And not even just the resolution tonight, but I just, I went back and looked at some of the earlier meetings and minutes with the company Gov HR, and saw that somebody had to bring up the issue of like translating when the president was talking about how they're going to do their community relations and find out what the community wants, you know, in the city manager. So I think that's, it even starts there. Go back to why are we choosing a consultant that hasn't even thought about people that speak other languages in America in 2020? And then also to echo everybody else's sentiments about the young women organizers from Evanston that spoke up earlier. I'm not sure if people on City Council have been to the rally yesterday or to the protest last week that they organized, but a lot of Evanstonians such as myself and younger are speaking out. I mean, our voice is heard, and I think we're going to get changed one way or another. So I think you guys have a unique opportunity to be on the right side of that change. But if not, I think it's going to happen regardless. So I just wanted to say that, and thank you for letting my voice be heard.
Then, thank you, Nick, for joining us. Beth Scares, Beth on the line, and then Dylan Johnson.
I don't believe the next two are mayor. I think Mr. Sutton is the next speaker.
All right, so then we've got Carla Sutton and then Leslie McMillan. Are you on the line, Carla? Can't hear you if you're talking.
I can't either, I'm trying to get this on.
There we go, there we go.
First, I just want to thank to have the proposal, SP, transferred over to the Rules Committee. Secondly, and more important, I want to commend those young ladies and their statements and this morning, and I hope they continue to show a more visible presence at the City Council meetings in the future. And I want to thank you for letting this happen. But in the meantime, we really need to have more input and more transparency in these Zoom meetings and in City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. And then lastly, Leslie McMillan? Leslie on the line?
I don't believe so, I think Mr. Velso is the next speaker.
Oh, so Mike's on the line, okay. Mike Velso? Is he the last one, Luke?
I believe so, Mayor.
All right. Mike, are you on the line?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, welcome.
Thank you. So the lot of oxygen was kind of sucked out of the room on some very important issues that everybody else talked about. I'd just like to focus on a handful of other items that are in your packet that need attention. Regarding the city manager, there's an ordinance 18020 making it more difficult for the council to remove a sitting city manager. The council should vote against that. It should be a simple majority to remove a city manager. I'm curious why on item A12, you're considering awarding what sounds to be a very complicated and sensitive construction project in Fleetwood to repair that floor once and for all, but you're awarding it to, basically to a carpet company. I mean, I like central rug and carpet, I've bought throw rugs there, but when it comes to credentials for doing the sensitive work that needs to be done, you should really look at a more qualified company or get a multi-year warranty and guarantee. Ordinance 25020 is regarding the tree replacement on private property. I read that ordinance several times. Maybe it's just me, but it's not, it's complicated. There should be examples of what kind of fees citizens are going to pay if they have trees that are taken down for one reason or another and they have to be replaced. I'd ask that be simplified, the ordinance, and held until it's simplified. I'd also like you to vote against ordinance 55020, which ends up being yet another hidden tax. This is the amusement tax on citizens who stream movies and things at home. I mean, this is another tax the council is slipping in to pick up $125,000 or whatever the CEO says he thinks he can get out of us. That should come out. I guess, and I want to go back to what I bring up every week, and you guys never dwell on it. It was impressive that you had the first 10 minutes of these people, this young lady speaking to the council. You should have 10 minutes of time speaking about the 41 deaths in Evanston senior care facilities. That's 75% of the total deaths in Evanston. They occur in these senior care facilities. I don't understand why we don't talk more about what the problem is and how it's being resolved. I've written, no one replies, I've asked a number of times, there's no discussion about it. It's not one of those things you just sweep under the rug. Forty-one Evanston residents, as of yesterday, died in these facilities, and there should be more discussion about that. Lastly, why are we spending $300,000 for engineering on a bike path? A bike path that could be postponed to 2021. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. And then I understand that we have Kira Kelly on the line. Kira?
Yeah, thank you. I applaud Erica Storley for advocating for, and the city agreeing with, a public process for city manager. But I'm going to go ahead and read what I was going to say as I believe it remains important for other issues. City council really cannot continue to skirt or contort our processes as we citizens have seen happen many times over the last few years. We also can't have the city, again, disregard, dismiss, limit, or in this case, what almost happened, remove, public input on a matter. The fast-track process for a city manager may be, may have been a surprise for some, but many of us, following other issues, have witnessed numerous examples of a process quite trampled, I hate to say that word, and most specifically by the former city manager. It appears to sometimes happen to get a desired predetermined result instead of what feels like a true legislative process. And this has resulted in a perception that there's, it's just not a fair situation. And unfortunately, this has diminished trust. Second, at the last City Council meeting, Alderman Rainey said she supported Ms. Storley in large part because she was the former city manager, Wally Bobkowitz's protege. Well, for many Evanstonians, the past city manager did a lot of damage to our city and is not the model we want for our future manager. From the $900,000 racial discrimination lawsuit against him, another lawsuit from a police racially profiling incident that was prolonged and unnecessary escalated. And going back to process, huge issues along these lines by the last city manager and a lack of consideration of public opinion or public vision. We really need to know what Erica's take is on many of these things. I also began to see the city manager use the budget and budget woes over the years to further certain objectives, as I saw happen with Kevin Brown's situation from cutting the budget, his budget, to a promotion that took away staff, and on. And I can only assume may have led up to Kevin's stunning dismissal. Anyway, there, I could go into many examples that maybe I'll email you of. I'm not just saying that there were process irregularities, there really are, and I'd be happy to send you an email with them listing. But again, happy, I'm happy Erica has spoken out, and we will have a process that was agreed upon. Ms. Storley may well be the ultimate and best candidate, but it must be done appropriately. And also, I'm glad we'll have a chance to hear from Ms. Storley during a public process of what kind of a city manager she will be, her stance is on certain issues, and if she does plan to continue with the same approach as her predecessor, and what her commitment is to the process and the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kira, and thank you, everybody, for speaking at public comment today. We're now going to move to the agenda this evening. And first up, we've got special orders of business. Alderman Rainey, could you move SP1, please? You're muted, Anne.
I'm muted, yes. SP1, staff is recommending that council approve Evanston Cares Act amendments to the 2015-19 Consolidated Plan, the 2019 Action Plan, and the Citizens Participation Plan that incorporate the CDVG CV and ESG CV funding for the Cares Act to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. I move approval.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All right, any discussion on this item?
I mean, I can go into the funding sources, et cetera, if you want, but it's all in our packet.
All right, seeing no, no discussion. City Clerk, can you please take the roll on SP1?
Yes, sorry.
Alderman Suffolk?
Aye.
Alderman Revel?
Aye.
Alderman Ray?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Witten?
Aye.
And Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
All right, thank you, thank you, Clerk. SP1, approval of the Evanston Cares Act amendments to the 2015-19 Consolidated Plan, Plan Year 2019 Action Plan and Citizen Participation Plan passes the Evanston City Council on a 9 to 0 vote. SP2 was removed from the agenda, and next Monday, the City Council will meet at the Rules Committee to discuss the city manager search process. We're now going to move to SP3. Alderman Fisk, could you please move that?
Sure. So SP3 is the approval of funding for the Dutch elm tree injection program. Stafford, the City Council discussed and provide direction regarding the funding of the Dutch elm disease injection program. It's provided by the General Fund Forestry Division Budget and/or interest from interest earned in the Capital Improvement Fund. And what I'm going to move is that we use the interest from the Capital Improvement Fund. And Erica, are you on the, are you on here? I don't remember, is it $297,000? Are you?
$290,000.
All right, $290,000 in the balance to be raised in a public fundraising campaign.
Okay. I got fancy.
I'm sorry? Sponsored by Natural Habitat Evanston, Citizens Greener Evanston, and the Evanston Community Foundation.
And tree.
And, and tree, absolutely. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this, Mary? Alderman Fleming, and then Alderman Suffolk?
Yeah, I just will say I...
Yeah, I just will say I thank you to the community who stepped in for the thing that they care about. I will continue to not support this, and I, very simply, because while trees are important for a lot of reasons, we have just gone through a pretty severe crisis with health and obviously because, you know, economics, and I don't know when we're going to recover from that. And, you know, I'm getting calls and emails almost every day for people looking for services, a lot of which we don't support, a lot of which our nonprofits are reaching capacity at. And so having three hundred thousand dollars that is unallocated that we could use for many different things in supporting our citizens, or even keeping some of our staff who we are potentially going to furlough or have already furloughed, able to work, I just can't make that comparison between trees and services. And then my other, I guess, statement is Erica Storley and I already had this conversation, but as for Atech and his budgeting team, as we had a budget discussion, I don't know, a few weeks ago, and we talked about how we're going to try to balance our budget, I'm a bit frustrated that this money was not brought to the table in terms of how we can shore up our budget deficit. I was a little bit shocked here that we had this, you know, almost three hundred thousand dollars laying around for interest, it's unallocated, so I am a little bit frustrated that our budget team did not come to us during the budget discussion when we labored about furloughs and other things and know that this three hundred thousand dollars was available for use.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Suffolkin, and then Alderman Rainey.
I just want to make sure I understand the financial implications of this, and then if Dave Stunback or Michael Callahan, maybe they can help me with this. When we did this, it was reluctant, but it was to save three hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars by putting off half the injections. Now we're dumping in this two ninety, I mean, we're going to walk out of this meeting farther from closing the hole in the budget than we would have been, and I would really like to understand what actual costs we're talking about when we're talking about taking down trees. Because, I mean, between the three hundred twenty-eight thousand that we would have saved, plus the two ninety that could have been used for other purposes, I mean, this is like a six hundred fifty thousand dollar swing farther from where we need to get. Am I correct on that?
Oh.
Help me understand. I'm not asking it like, I really want to understand, because I think our number one priority needs to be to close this gap, and I want to make sure that we're not leaving meetings with more problems, and then at the end of the year, when we're trying to figure out what we're going to do, having to resort to a tax increase.
So I can address some of those questions, and then I believe Michael Callahan is here, and he can address some of them. So in terms of the funding, you know, the funding that has been identified is interest gained on a fund balance from the capital fund. So typically, this is a fund, you know, this accrues every year, and, you know, in years past, most frequently, what happens is it rolls into the fund, and it can be used for future capital projects. That doesn't mean that it can't be used for other things. I think that, you know, whether or not it could be put towards our budget deficit, absolutely, that's a question for the council to discuss. But I think Michael can opine on what your question was about the cutting down of the trees or what.
My question, hey, Michael, is, I mean, there's been different numbers thrown out about what it would cost if we have to remove trees, and what I want to understand before we all take this vote is how much money, you know, the thing that the tree advocates have said is that you're either going to spend to inject, or you're going to spend to turn down. And I want to understand, is that really a one-to-one relationship? And I realize there's another factor, and we talk about losing trees and all the things that they bring to our community, but I want to understand the numbers. Is it a one-to-one relationship, or do we either spend three hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars to inject them all this year, or we're going to spend three hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars cutting?
It's not a one-to-one. We can't really know exactly what we're going to be spending, how much to do removals. Our removals last year, when we subcontracted them out, ran on average twenty-three hundred dollars for the removal, and that doesn't include doing the replanting. So the challenge is trying to figure out and trying to anticipate how many trees we would be losing by not injecting the trees. So in the previous years, we've ran as high as six point four percent of our elm population died to Dutch elm disease and needed to be removed. That was pretty much the high, and that happened right before we started treating the trees. So if we don't treat the trees, we're definitely going to have an increase in our percentage of mortality to Dutch elm disease, but we just don't know how bad of a year it's going to be. And that's always the million-dollar question is, can we forecast it? Can we try to figure out exactly where we're at? If we do the forecasting and look back years and years and years, we're running about three point eight, three point nine percent total mortality in the recent population. So that's going back in the records, back into the nineteen nineties. But we are definitely going to lose more trees. There's no two ways about it. And then we just don't know exactly what we would be having to contract out if we get a, if it's a severe year. We could lose a great deal number of trees. We have two thousand three hundred and seventy elm trees right now, so they're spread out through the city pretty good, but we do have the possibility that they do get infected through root grafting. I'm more worried about the root grafting than anything else, because there's no protection from that. Once it gets into the root systems, it just goes down the line and affects all the trees unless we can try to break it. So it's not one-to-one, we just don't know what it's going to be, though.
Thank you. We've got Alderman Rainey, then Alderman Fisk.
Also, we've committed to spending this money next year, so might as well spend it this year and save the money for cutting down the trees, and then spending it next year and also having to cut down trees. I mean, it doesn't make any sense to skip the year. It just doesn't make any sense to skip half the trees. We've promised to do it half and half, doesn't make any sense. If we do it half and half, we're going to spend this money next year, but then we're also going to have to cut down the trees we're killing by not doing it all this year. Makes no sense. We have this money, we should do it. We're going to show you, if we let these trees die, that we were right. I don't want to be right. I'd rather, I'd rather do it.
Thank you, Alderman. We've got Alderman Fisk, then Alderman Rue Simmons, then Wilson, and then Wynn. So Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Alderman Rainey, for those comments. I absolutely agree with them. At the end of the cycle, my understanding is, and I asked staff to call, I don't remember his name, in Minnesota, I'm not sure, he's the expert on the arbiotech fungicide, and I'm not sure anyone bothered to do that. But my understanding is that once the tree becomes uninjected, which is at the end of the three-year cycle, then it's very vulnerable to Dutch elm. And it is, so we can't really depend on past experience or past numbers to anticipate how many trees are going to go down. It's probably going to be many, many more. And if any of you have large, you know, old elms in your neighborhood, you know that when one comes down, you can hear, you know, when the chopper is going all day, there are people gathered around, and they are so sad and crying, and it is a terrible sight to see. And again, this doesn't make any sense to not be injecting the trees and then paying for them to come down. It's just absurd to me. So I think that the other problem that I saw was, when I looked at the map, and a comment in the staff report that said that decisions were being made by identifying areas where, wealthier areas where people could probably inject their own trees, that just makes, I don't know how many divisions we want to place in our community, but that's a terrible conversation for us to have. It's just, and I don't know whether it's legal or not, I'll leave that to others to figure that out, but that is a terrible conversation to have. And when I talked to somebody today who was aware of, because they asked me where the trees were going to come down, and I showed them the map, and they said, well, what's next? Are we going to have to pay for our garbage? Are we going to have to pay for what's next for us? And I just felt, this is what we warned about at the beginning. I mean, to be absolutely equitable throughout the city, we should be prioritizing these living trees and taking care of them. We have a ninety-eight percent success rate on it. Why would we be throwing that out the window only to pay more to cut them down? It's just, I don't know.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rue Simmons, then Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. Obviously, my priority is our residents and families, but this is a situation where I don't want to see our community, specifically our neighborhoods, without this environmental asset. These trees are undervalued, I believe, by some, but understanding more about the values of the trees and how they filter our air and cool our streets, especially in a neighborhood that has not only the waste transfer station, but Tape Coat, who is now in violation from the EPA, as well as busing from not having a neighborhood school. In addition, it's enhancing architecture, it's enhancing the neighborhood, it's adding property value, and the serenity of the trees is actually reducing stress. I would challenge our staff and community organizations that are concerned about environmental matters, that you do more intentional outreach to neighborhoods that may not know the full value of what these environmental assets are doing. I want to applaud Citizens Greener Evanston for the last several years making an attempt to do so, but our staff and other organizations, I'm hoping that we educate the community on the value of the trees, how forest bathing is something we all might want to take some time doing to de-stress. So I'm going to be in support of this, and it's going to be for the quality of life for our residents in Evanston.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson, and Alderman Wynn?
Thank you, Anne. I think Alderman Rainey and Alderman Rue Simmons covered most of my points, but as I expressed before, this was a very difficult decision for me in not supporting the funding. And I think that in conjunction with the cost of removing the trees that come down, and also the efforts to do the fundraising, that's kind of tipped the scale slightly for me in the other direction. It is, as Alderman Rue Simmons mentioned, it's an important quality of life asset throughout the community. So when I voted against it, it was primarily because this is a cash flow issue, as Alderman Rainey identified. It's money that's going to get spent, you know, over two years. The original plan was to spend it all this year, but hopefully, we can manage the cash flow sufficiently, and we can get some robust fundraising. Again, I do appreciate that group's outreach, and I even got a solicitation, I think, today, so they are on it and working hard to raise that money, so I appreciate that effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Wynn?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I agree with all of the statements that have been made in support of this, and I would just like to also add that we are really just the stewards of these elms. I mean, they, some of them are a hundred years old. I think we actually have an obligation to maintain them, because unlike almost everything else we have in this city, they take a hundred years to be created. And the idea that we would neglect them for a year and potentially lose some, I mean, it's not like pushing off a street resurfacing or an alley project or any of our other capital projects where we can say, okay, we can't afford it this year, but we'll do it three or four years from now. Well, three or four years from now, we won't have these trees, they'll be gone. I mean, it's one of these unusual assets that we have, that if we fail them, then they disappear. And so in that sense, they are different from all of our other assets, and they are different in terms of the benefits they give us, and as the benefits that have been discussed by everyone here, cooling, you know, we now understand what they do for absorbing water from our streets when we're having way too much water come down. Forest bathing, Alderman Rue Simmons is absolutely right, the de-stress thing they do for the communities. It's really critically important, and I do think that we can't only do half, because we don't, it's unpredictable what will happen. We do know we had a very mild, wet winter, and the materials that we've read in the past say that a mild, wet winter actually accelerates the Dutch elm disease. So I don't want to find out. I do think this is our obligation, and we've taken it on, and we've taken it on from our prior forestry departments, because the reason why we even have any of these elm trees is because Evanston's forestry department, over the years, unlike almost every other forestry department in the state of Illinois, just didn't give up. The Aurora, where my husband grew up, used to be completely lined with elms. The trees were all, the streets were all lined with elms, and he can remember the years where they all were cut down. And even Skokie used to have many more elms than it does now, except that Evanston's forestry department was innovative, and we are the beneficiaries of that, and I think we really need to consider that we should be able to pass on good stewardship, our stewardship of this asset, that it's not replaceable. I mean, it really isn't replaceable in any reasonable time. So I support spending this money, and Alderman Rainey is absolutely right, we're going to spend it next year, but next year, we'll have fewer trees and we'll have more costs, and we'll have damaged our environment on top of it.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Alderman. All right. I don't see any more hands for any further discussion on this item. So city clerk, item SP three, approval of funding for the Dutch elm tree injection program was moved and seconded. Could you please take the roll?
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffolkin?
No.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Ray?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman, uh, Alderman Fisk? Did you say?
Aye.
Now, Alderman Braithwaite?
No.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
All right. SP three, approval of funding for the Dutch elm tree injection program passes the Evanston City Council on a six to three vote. All right, we're now going to move to the consent agenda this evening. There were committee meetings for APW and E and D, so I'm going to go to the way that we have done this before and ask Alderman to take a minute and just identify any items that you would like to have removed from the agenda.
Ms. Mayor, I'd like to have A fourteen removed.
Remove A four, please.
A seven.
A seven, okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
A twelve.
All right. Any other items? All right. Then with those items off, Alderman Fleming, could you just move the consent agenda, including, which will include the minutes?
Yeah, and I'll just tell you, A seven did not pass committee, so it does not need to be.
Okay, so A seven is failing committee. Okay.
All right, so I'm going to move the city council minutes. C one, approval of minutes for the regular city council meeting. for the Regular City Council Meeting of May 26, 2020, for action. A1, from the Administration and Public Works Committee, we held tonight, is the approval of City of Evanston Payroll and Bills List. Staff recommends council approve payroll, period May 11, 2020 through May 24, 2020, in the amount of $2,471,824.96. The bills list for June 9, 2020, in the amount of $6,564,134.
Alderman Fleming, the way I was thinking about it and the way we did it before, when we had committee, is we removed the items, which we removed off the consent agenda, and then just moved everything without having to read it all, because you had done that in committee.
I thought we were reading because they're dollar amounts, but I'm done.
No, I think that's the way, that's the process we were following before. Do you move, you move the consent agenda, with the exception of the items that we removed off? Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. Seeing no discussion, City Clerk, could you please take the roll on the consent agenda?
Yes. Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin?
Aye.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Ray?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
And Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so the consent agenda passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. Now Alderman Fleming, I'm going to have you read and move those items that were taken off. So let's start with A4.
All right, A4. I move for action, Approval of Contract Award with Civil Tech Engineering Incorporated for Church Street Pedestrian and Bike Improvement. Staff recommends council authorize city manager to enter into an agreement in the amount of $293,650.41. Funding is committed from the Geo Bond Fund, and this is for action.
There's a second.
Second.
Okay. Alderman Suffertin?
I just, I pulled this one because it's a comparable dollar amount. I appreciate what was said about if we don't inject the trees and we lose them, we lose them forever. This is a project that can be put on hold for $300,000, something that we could do in another time after we close this budget gap. I'm just like everyone to consider perhaps voting no and pushing this forward a year.
I just have one question of the city manager. If that's the case on this, can this help us with our budget deficit, though, or is it coming out of capital funds?
Yeah, this was part of the capital discussion a few weeks ago, maybe it was a month ago, where we selected which capital projects we would defer and which capital projects we would move forward on. So if we did defer this project, it wouldn't have any savings to the general fund or help us close our gap. It would just be the amount of money that we would potentially bond for or use from capital savings.
Other questions? Alderman Wilson?
Well, just a comment is that obviously this is a heavily trafficked area, and obviously this is an area where there are a lot of kids, both on foot and on bicycles. I remember a few years ago, there was a count of the bicycles, and I think it was in the neighborhood of hundreds. So it seems to me that it's a very significant safety issue and concern, and the way it operates as far as functionality right now, to me, doesn't seem particularly safe, and I think it is a relevant and important improvement for getting our kids in and out of that school, the school areas safely. So, you know, as I've expressed, I want to save money where I can, but I also want to prioritize safety, too. So I feel like we should go ahead and get this one done.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, City Clerk, could you please take the roll on A4?
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin?
No.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Ray?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Braithwaite?
No.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
All right, A4, Approval of Contract Award with Civil Tech Engineering, Inc., for the Church Street Pedestrian and Bicycle Improvements, passes the Evanston City Council on a six to three vote. All right, Alderman Fleming, could you take us to A7?
A7 failed in committee.
Oh, excuse me. All right, so A7 failed in committee. To A12?
A12, Resolution 51-R-20, authorizing city manager to enter into a contract to reconstruct Fleetwood Jordane gym floor without authorizing a public bidding process. Staff recommends we authorize city manager to go into an agreement with Central carpet, Central Rug and Carpet in the amount of $593,851 without utilizing a public bid process. Funding is from the capital improvement fund 2020 and 2020 general obligation funds for action.
There's a second.
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 Okay, this is open for discussion. All right. Alderman Fisk, did you have something on this or no?
Yes, I just had a question for staff in response to the question that was raised during citizen comment about why a carpet company is doing this. I didn't know that they did rebuilding of floors and subfloors, and is there a staff person anywhere?
We have Laura on the line. Laura, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, this is Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer. So we have worked with Central Rug and Carpet on a wide variety of projects, and most of them have been flooring in a variety of city facilities. But most recently, one of the projects we worked on was the Fleetwood Jordane interior improvements, where they did a lot of other work, including some structural. They have a tendency to sub out higher or really complex construction elements and focus more on the project, but they served very well as a general contractor. In this particular case, a lot of the money is built into the actual installation of flooring systems, although there is a substantial amount for demolition of the existing floor as well.
Okay. Just a lot of money, that's just...
Alderman, all right, lots of hands going up now. Alderman Ru Simmons, then Rainey, then Wilson.
I'm mute.
I appreciate Alderman Fisk, your concern and additional questions. I had those questions, too, when I saw their bid and participation with both Robert Crown and later with the interior renovations at Fleetwood. Those renovations are great. The community is very pleased. I haven't heard any sort of concerns on performance or quality of service from our staff. And with that said, I would imagine that they, too, have the capacity and the ability to demolish and install the gym floor.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rainey?
Laura, could you give us an idea of some of the subs that are going to be hired to do this work? Alderman Fisk, I'm really concerned about this project also, and I mentioned in committee that this floor has been problematic for years, decades, and this has got to be, they've got to do the fix the correct way this time. So could you give us some idea of the various subs that are going to be working on solving this problem?
Alderman, I do not have that information off the top of my head. I apologize. It's information I can get and send to you, but I don't have it with me right now.
But you know, I mean, there's going to be plumbers, there's going to be engineers...
Primarily, there's a demolition aspect to the project, then there is a subbase installation, and then there is the final flooring system. And so the subbase installation and the final flooring system are two different subs that are specialty subs. And the demolition, I believe, is being performed by Central Rug and Carpet. But they are essentially, just like when they buy carpet and they bring it in and install it, there is, they're buying it from a vendor, and then they're bringing that in. The flooring they are contracting with a vendor, basically any general contractor we hire, is going to contract with the flooring system vendor who's going to come in and install it.
I mean, we're just all concerned that this problem isn't just going to be covered up and, you know, throw some cement down and put some, you know, basketball flooring down, and that's it.
I completely understand.
We know that's not going to happen, but we're hoping exactly.
And I apologize. The bids were reviewed by a project manager and also by the engineering firm that we hired to work on the design. I just don't have the information about the subs. I am happy to get that information and send that out.
I'm confident.
Alderman Wilson?
And I think the memo has some good information, I think, on the water infiltration in the groundwater. And maybe can you just, if you're able to, explain more on how the proposed subflooring is going to prevent that potential groundwater issue? And maybe you don't have that level of detail, but I guess I just want to be reassured that the solution includes something that's going to prevent the thing that keeps causing the problem.
Certainly. So the existing flooring is a combination of a layer of concrete that is a more porous lightweight concrete base, and then it has a substance that has been applied that is tar-like, in which we are assuming that was intended to be a vapor barrier. And then there's another layer of lightweight concrete on top of that, and then there is, the flooring system is cast directly into a second lightweight concrete. We are going to remove all of that, put in a concrete layer and a legitimate vapor barrier, then add in a leveling layer to make sure that the floor is completely flat, put in another vapor barrier system, and then install the new floor on top of that. And so it's actually, one of the biggest costs is just in the demolishing and removal of so much material. Another large cost is in this leveling binder layer that goes in, because that's a fairly expensive product. And then a third unanticipated cost is that the bleachers are currently not really operable. They're supposed to be able to be extended and contracted, and then we had originally hoped we could just remove them and reinstall them, but the bleachers actually don't work that way anymore because they're elderly, and so we need to replace the bleacher system as well.
All right, thank you. That makes sense.
All right, we got a couple hands up. Alderman Ru Simmons, and then Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Mayor Hagerty. As you heard from Laura's explanation, staff has been troubleshooting this, seems like the whole time I've been here. They have done assessments and had experts in there and looked at different solutions. So I can say that I have seen their hard work, due diligence, and commitment to making sure they have an option that's going to solve it once and for all, and that's been their response. When I pushed on, you know, why can't we get this floor done? Bam is interrupted. Foster Senior Club needs to have access. Other programming is being canceled, and it's been like, give us the time to get the right assessment and get it right. I've seen staff work really hard, having many meetings, to come up with a final solution so that we don't have this ongoing problem, as Alderman Rainey has mentioned.
Thank you, Alderman. And Alderman Fisk?
Yeah, well, like some others, I just want to make sure, Laura, that what was causing the water infiltration, the, I guess, a toilet drain or whatever the plumbing situation was, and then I'm not sure what the other water infiltration problem was from, but I just want to make sure that those things are corrected. I mean, are we having to do sewer work underneath? Is that, what's the plumbing component of this fix?
So we have investigated a number of potential sources for the water, everything from checking to make sure that the roof drains are operating properly and not dumping water into the building somewhere because the roof drains are integrally cast into the walls, to check, we've provided floor cleaning equipment that minimizes the use of water on the roof floors during the cleaning process instead of wet mopping, which is what was previously being done. It seems as if the primary sources of water, according to consultants that we've hired to do these assessments, are, there was a flood in the kitchen drain backed up, and it flooded the auditorium, and it went into the gym and wicked underneath the floor and spread everywhere. And then the, when they installed volleyball stanchions, they were not sealed entirely properly, and that allowed water to come up. There's also a general concern because of what other buildings are experiencing in the area, but there just is a high groundwater level in the area right now because we just have a lot of rain going on and soil moisture and flooding issues and stuff. So we have mitigated the easy-to-do things while we were investigating this, doing this investigation about where this water could be coming from. We actually mitigated a lot of the other sources that were easy to check out, like camering the roof drains. By...
I'm sorry, like what, the roof drains?
Oh, putting a camera down in the roof drains and making sure that they were completely clear and not blocked. By putting in this type of dual vapor barrier system, we believe that any water that is coming up from the floor or the ground underneath the floor is going to be mitigated. We also plan to definitely seal any volleyball stanchions and any other penetrations into the floor, and it actually includes basically installing a more serious edging around the floor that allows to make sure that at the edges of the floor, water also cannot wake up. There was also work done previously to this, to look at the sewer draining from the building to make sure that we could mitigate any problems with the sewer that caused the backup. And in fact, they have improved the cleanouts and various other things to make sure the sewers can operate better as they leave the building.
Is there a sump pump system? Is there, I just don't want to have to spend this money again, and it sounds to me like you're doing everything right, but I just want to make sure that we've done everything so that we don't have to go back and revisit it.
I completely understand. There is no self-pump system. It drains by gravity, but it essentially goes out under the building to a catch basin and then drains into the main sewer for the city. And the catch basin was clogged tremendously. There wasn't a really good way to clean it out, and it wasn't particularly on people's lists of things to do for maintenance, so they've improved the access. I mean, it just appeared that essentially children had been dumping stuff down into the catch basin, like poking sticks into it and stuff like that. So they have fixed that problem. They've improved the access. It's now on a regular cleaning cycle in order to make sure this does not occur again.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion on this item? All right, seeing none. City Clerk, could you please take the roll on A12, Resolution 51-R-20, authorizing city manager entering their contract to reconstruct the Fleetwood Jordane gym floor without utilizing a public bid process?
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin? Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Ray?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
This passes, and Alderman Suffertin, I saw two thumbs up, so it's a yes for you. Okay, so this passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. Alderman Fleming, can you take us to A13?
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, I had taken A7 off. We haven't done A7, I don't think.
It did not pass in committee. It did not make it to the consent agenda.
It didn't pass out of committee, Judy.
Oh, oh, A7 didn't?
Nope.
Okay.
All right, now we're A13, Alderman Fleming.
A13 is ordinance 50, oh, actually, we're doing, ordinance 56-O-20, Amending City Code Section 10-11-5D for four-way stops to include four-way stop at Hastings and Colfax. Alderman Suffertin asked that we spin the rules and do introduction and action for tonight.
Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Fisk?
Yes, it's me again. I was looking in the packet. What does it cost to put up a four-way stop? I couldn't find the staff report in the packet. Do we know? It's all right if we don't know. It can't be that much, but I was curious. Laura?
Yeah, so it really only costs maybe less than $1,000.
Okay.
For like $4,700 in order to do the signs.
Okay. Okay. All right, thanks.
All right. Alderman Sufferton, do you want to move the motion then?
I move that we take item A 13 for introduction actions.
Second.
May I just jump in? We have to move to suspend the rules. It has to be unanimous vote and then we can move it in for intro and action.
Okay.
Yeah, I already did.
All right, so that's what I took Alderman Sufferton to do. So we'll, we'll do a vote on that. Can I just do a voice vote? All, all in favor of making this for introduction, suspending the rules and allowing this to be for action tonight as well?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so suspension of the rules passes on a nine to zero vote. The item was moved and seconded. City clerk, could you please take the roll on item A 13?
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle? Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
All right, item A 13 passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. Alderman Fleming, can you take us to A 14?
Yes, item A 14 is ordinance 55 dash O dash 20 amending amusement tax. Staff recommends council adopt this ordinance amending amusement tax to include online streaming services and to increase amusement tax in venues with capacity over 1,500 audience members for action.
Second?
Second.
Okay, okay. Item Alderman Wynn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I took this off and I am in support of all of this except for the provision that exempts excludes events at venues with a capacity of under 100 audience members. And I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but I've heard from constituent business in my ward who would like to be part of that discussion. And so what I would like to do is separate that out and postpone that discussion to a later time so that we can bring more of the stakeholders in the arena of music venues in, to the discussion so that it's a fairer process for everyone.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson?
And I think this actually goes back to our budget discussions and you know, it's actually, I don't want to call it a crisis, but it's, it's really important that we move forward with this for those small businesses, you know, things like the, you know, the coffee shops or wine shops that have small performances. And, you know, until we exempt them, they're getting hammered with this tax. So I think it's important that we move forward with this. I'm not really sure what your concern you're expressing. Is it like they, they want it to be more than 100 or they don't like?
No, they wanted, they wanted to be at the table to discuss this. And actually, right now, I don't think anybody is singing in any public venue right now.
Well, I mean, it's hopefully it's imminent, but
Right.
I mean, do they not like it or they, I, I don't get that. What I'm not clear is what the issue is.
So, you know, I understand, I, I'm, I'm just expressing and relaying their concern that, that they would like to be part of the discussion in terms of whether we exempt smaller venues from this tax. And no, 100 people is, is actually much bigger than a coffee shop for the most part. So I'm, I'm asking that we hold this for for two weeks until the next meeting. Hold that one particular section, which is 3 dash 2 dash 17 dash 1 subsection A, subsection D, until the next meeting so that we can bring more people to the table. And it doesn't necessarily mean I won't support this at that point, but this is a request that they are a music venue and they really do want to be able to participate in this discussion. And they didn't realize that this was coming up.
So, okay, I'm, I'm still confused, like, so they want to get taxed? They, they want to participate so they can get taxed more? I, all right, I'm just confused, but, okay.
No, I think that they want to discuss who gets exempted and where, how that number of 100 got arrived at and what happens when they finally get back in business and they're actually a much larger venue, but maybe they only have 85 people at an event. Do they get exempted for this? That's the clarification that they're, they want to understand. Because 100, 100 audience members is actually a sizable venue.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Absolutely.
So what I'm, what I'm asking for is to just separate that one section. I'm in favor of every other aspect of this and to hold it for two weeks and so that the, the the discussion could be had with all of the stakeholders.
I second that.
Erica, I just have a question. If this is-
Mayor.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know. Hi, this is, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. If this is like, I don't know whether Alderman Wynn wants like what we did with the other one where she wants venues with a capacity or attendance under 100 audience members. Would that justify? That helps the Alderman Wynn?
I think what we need to do here, if this is the direction, is to, to just make a motion to amend the existing ordinance and vote on that ordinance. And then there would be a referral for the trailer portion of it, which could go on a future agenda. I'm not sure that we can hold one part of this and then put it on for action in another week, another two weeks, but maybe our court council can opine on that.
That's what we should do.
Okay, yes. So that's what I'm interested in doing.
That makes sense. You can withdraw your motion to hold that portion and then just make a motion to amend like the city manager said.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not sure I made a motion to hold this, but I could make a motion to amend it. Make a motion to amend the, the original ordinance. Yes.
Moving the 100.
Yes. So I move approval of ordinance 55 dash O dash 20 with the amendment of removal of section 3 dash 2 dash 17 dash 1 subsection A, subsection D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Oh, Cicely, I'm sorry.
I have a question about the other part, I guess.
Okay, so, so let's do that. So all, all in favor then of that amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
You're opposed? Okay, so the amendment passes eight to, eight to one. Okay, Alderman Fleming?
Eric, can I just, just, you know, finish up on that thread? I would like to have, have this aspect of this brought back at a future meeting at a time when we can, with enough sufficient time so that we can bring all the stakeholders in or have them, you know, virtually bring them in so that we can move forward with this.
Got it.
Or not.
All right, so Erica will take, make sure that happens. Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, and, and so that's all fine. I guess my, my two things. So one for the piece that Alderman Wynn just put forward. I mean, I, you know, I'm indifferent. I think if, I mean, I would like just to have citizen comment on all things we do. So maybe they could have just come to public comment today or, you know, it just seems like a little bit of prolonged process. Meeting virtually today now, try to have some, you know, have these stakeholders at whatever table we're talking about. So, I mean, it's fine doing it. It seems like we could have maybe just amended it so that if you, even if your venue fits 1,000, if you only have 85 people to your point, then you're not taxed for that night or something. But so I'm still going to oppose the streaming tax. I realize it's not a huge line item. I realize we do have a budget deficit. But again, as I, maybe because I'm at the food pantry, as I'm seeing people who have some real stark need that for us to add another tax to this, to the citizens, and particularly so many who are still not comfortable going out, they can't go to the movies. You know, these streaming services are really their, you know, family entertainment to add any tax to that, even if it's small. I just feel like is a little bit tone deaf. And I realize as city manager said, a lot of people are going digital now. They're not having the phone and cable services. So there is going to be a time for us to, to look to that tax. And I guess I'd rather have that conversation during the budget discussion when we're discussing lots of other things than at a time where we're just coming out of, we're still in crisis. And then I guess that's my last comment about that. So I'm, I'm a no, but I wanted to explain why.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none. City clerk, can you please take the roll on A 14, ordinance 55 dash 0 dash 20 amending the amusement tax as amended?
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
No.
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
All right, A 14, amending ordinance 55 0 dash 20 amending amusement tax as amended passes the city council on a six to three votes. All right, Alderman Rainey, could you move P 1?
Yes. P 1 is removed from the council agenda, from the consent agenda. And it has been recommended by our staff that we simply table this and we agreed to table it to the first council meeting in November. And the reason for that is because we're having some vacancies in our downtown and we don't want to, of those amendments, I'm talking about P 2, I'm sorry. Could I, P 1, no, I'm talking about P 1. And we, we really want to not put any restrictions or anything on what we don't have already on ground floor uses in the downtown area. So I move that we table that and hold that until, table that until the first meeting on that date. I'm, I'm not sure what the date, I'm sorry. Somebody remind me.
It was November, I thought we tabled it in committee.
November, it was November, yeah, November 7? 9? November 9. November 9.
So was it tabled in committee or does the council?
Yes, it was tabled in, in committee until November 9, I'm sorry.
Right, so November 9. So this item requires no action right now for the city council? Got it. Did you take us to P 7?
P 7, yes. So P 7 is, hold on, I have it right here. P 7. P 7 is about trees and I, can I get to it? I'm sorry, let's see. Can somebody else read that because I've lost it on my screen?
No worries. I'm going to ask Alderman Fisk if she'll introduce.
Fisk, it's about trees, you read it?
Yeah, okay. It's ordinance 25 O 20 amending title 7, chapter 8, section 8, tree preservation. I'm going to move that we table this. It obviously needs some more work that we have done. We need to simplify it and make it, make it clearer. I don't, do we have to put a date on a tabling? Does it have to have a date?
Yes. November 9.
It's already been tabled once.
I think it just is asking us to accept it and place it on file. So I guess we could just revisit it at any time, right?
That's true, yeah.
So I would move that we just accept it and place it on file and then we can work on it later.
And then refer it back to-
Fine, just with the understanding that it does need more work, so.
Sure.
We'll do it.
All right, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so P 7 is accepted and placed on file and city staff will work on this further and come back to council for an ordinance.
That's it.
All right, thank, thank you. You know, Alderman Rainey, could you just move R 1 as well?
Yeah, I have that in one second because I found the council agenda. R 1 is, just wait, just wait, I'm going to have it right now. R 1 is, just wait. Here we go, here we go. R 1, ordinance 18 O 20 amending title 1, chapter 8, city manager. At the direction of the Rules Committee, staff recommend city council adoption of ordinance 18 O 20 amending title 1, chapter 8, city manager. This is for introduction. I move approval.
All right, any second. Open for discussion, Alderman Fleming?
No, it's introduction.
No, this is introduction, Alderman, yep, Alderman Fleming.
Oh, okay. Well, I just, I have a question for the law department. I know that we're, this is being done to match our city code, but I wasn't here when the city code was changed or whenever, whatever happened that these two don't match. And I'm just, I think we have to be very clear about explaining if we're doing something that citizens feel like is making their participation even more hindered. So why are we doing this?
So the, as I understand it, the code conflicted with the rules, specifically rule 7.1. So the code section was amended to match the rules of city council.
And which one was?
I can't, I'm sorry.
Which one was first? Did you know if we, like, did the code, did the city council rules change? And then we're now trying to change the code to match it or was there already?
That I, that I don't know. I can tell probably when the last amendment to the city code was, but I'd have to check to see with the clerk's office when the rules were implemented, when that rule was implemented.
Okay, and so as a home rule community, just to be clear, I know that you told me that the Illinois municipal code says, I think, what this language says, so the, whatever.
Yeah, the Illinois municipal code is silent on the removal. It specifically talks about voting in, or, sorry, not voting in, appointing a city manager. It's silent on the removal. So as a home, home rule municipality, we can enact our own amendment ordinance rules on that issue.
Okay, so I, I'm a no then if we don't have to change this, if we're changing it merely for our own internal. I think that a majority is fine. City manager, you know, should have the majority, the support of the majority council. And it seems like from my history of this council, we, you know, you, there hasn't been city managers that we fired previously, so I would like to leave it as is.
Any further discussion?
I would like-
Alderman Rainey?
I would like it to coincide with hiring and firing. It takes a certain number to hire, it should be the same to fire.
All right, seeing no more conversation. City clerk, can you take the roll on R 1, ordinance 18 dash 0 dash 20 amending title 1, chapter 8, city manager? This is for introduction.
Yes, Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
All right, R 1 passes introduction on a seven to two vote. We're now going to move to call of the wards. Today, we are starting with Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor Hagerty. I have a couple of, well, first I want to make a comment. I want to thank the young women that organized the march that was really powerful, very well attended and inspiring. Thank, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your boldness and thank you for holding us all accountable. Thank you for your powerful words today as we open this meeting. You have been heard. I want to invite each of you and those that are a member of your organizations to participate in the work that we're doing on reparations. Much of your concerns are wrapped into the goals of reparations. So thank you for that work and thank you for the leadership of Dr. Neighbors and Dr. G. Low and all the others that facilitated the rally on, I guess that was Sunday. Amazing, incredible, thank you. Thank you to all the residents of Evanston that have used your voice to advocate for black lives in Evanston. We appreciate you, but we have so much more work to do. So I have, I want to start with a appraise report, some really good news. And I want to highlight a leader in our community that's done a tremendous job in supporting our goals for keeping our community safe for COVID. Mrs. Carla Cooper, she is the director of Jacob Lake Manor and Ebenezer Prim Towers. And in 10 weeks, I guess 11 weeks now, she has led those two buildings which occupy over 200 of our senior residents in the ward to be coronavirus free. And that is significant because as we know, yes, thank you to her and to all of the- um, and to all of the staff at those two properties, as we know, um, the residents that occupy those two buildings are the most um, vulnerable to the virus, um, they are predominantly black, they are all elderly, and many of them have pre-existing health conditions. Tremendous job, um, to Ms. Carla Cooper and, uh, Ebenezer Church, and all the staff, and all the residents of Evanston that have done your part in sending meals, Jennifer's edibles, um, Evanston Community Foundation, and helping fund Jennifer's edibles to provide those meals. I am certain that those services to those two buildings have saved lives, as we are hearing that we have, um, a high percentage of our um, infections and death are in the, in the senior community, so I can't go on without saying thank you for all that you've done, and to the residents, the residents of those two buildings that have used your wisdom to, um, shelter and place and, uh, manage your family visits so that you could keep yourself and your neighbors and your buildings healthy. Um, thank you, that's a praise report. Um, in addition, I want to make a referral to the, um, arts committee, um, there was a very, um, appreciated and thoughtful, um, iconic, really, public art installation that was done by chalk um, at our Fountain Square, um, I understand that it's since been removed. I'm recommending to the art committee, um, that you put on an agenda, a permanent art installation that, um, uplifts the black community, something similar, um, calling it Black Lives Matter somewhere in that art installation. So if you could put that on an agenda on the arts committee. I'm making a referral to the, um, health department to, um, look at racism as a public health crisis. Other communities are discussing it, I understand that there might be a community in Ohio, a locality that has already passed it, I know the state of Ohio was looking at it, but if we could, um, open that up for discussion and see what that might look like in our city here, um, in Evanston. And, um, I appreciate the ninety, I'm learning ninety applications that came in for the police review board, may not be naming it right, um, but I wanna ask that, um, the applications that I've seen are all great, uh, residents and appropriate, but with limited seats. I wanna ask that we have at least, uh, one resident that is, um, has had a, um, interaction with law enforcement, has, um, had some criminal justice, um, experience on the, um, on the opposite side of law enforcement. And I know for a fact there is at least, um, two applications of residents that have had that experience that um, are now, um, actually tremendous leaders in our community. Um, so I'd ask that, I'd also ask that a member of the Citizens Network of Protection, um, is on that committee as well as a leader from Evanston Own It, um, being that disproportionately, black residents are, um, arrested here. We learned that during our work on reparations, seventy percent or more arrests are in the black community. Evanston Own It is leading, um, you know, dozens of churches that occupy black residents, so I would like for you to consider that. And then I have, um, we've talked about many times, um, an equity process of uh, looking at our boards, commissions, and committees. And I don't think we've ever settled on a process, and if we have, forgive me, um, if we have not, I would ask that, uh, I don't know if that will be the rules committee, if you could tell me which committee is best for us to, uh, or which staff is best to come back with a proposal on how we make sure that we have a, um, formula to make sure that our boards, commissions, and committees, um, are diverse and refer, and representing our community. And then I have, um.
The clerk's office is happy to assist with that.
Thank you, Clerk Reed, I appreciate that. Um, and then lastly, I just wanna invite everyone to, um, to join the conversation on reparations. Um, we, as Mayor Hagerty stated in his opening remarks, we're doing so much good in our community. Um, we are leaps and bounds ahead of other, um, localities. We know this from our relationships with our colleagues in other cities. Um, but we have something really special that can address targeted the concerns that we all share in the black community and its reparations. Uh, we've had many of these topics of discussions in that work, and so this is just an open invitation for everyone to follow the work. We have open committee meetings, and it will be a agenda item on our next city council meeting. So please do join that conversation, and again, um, thank you to Evanston for, um, being okay to have these bold and uncomfortable conversations so that we can, um, improve and be a livable city for all, um, and pay special attention to black lives because they have, um, we have, we have, we have been hurting. And, um, we, we wanna heal, and we wanna enjoy this city, uh, like everyone else does. Um, so please do keep, um, searching yourself and, um, seeking ways that you can improve and learn and grow, um, and support the black communities, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Rue Simmons. Uh, Alderman Suffertin?
No report.
Alderman Ravel?
It's hard to follow up all those, um, wonderful comments from Alderman Rue Simmons, um. I appreciate, um, your encouraging us to participate in the reparations discussions, um, I don't know if the rest of the council has seen the, um, article in the Chicago Magazine, um, Evanston's reparations, um, efforts in Robin. Um, anyway, it's really, it's a, it's a really great article. Um, I'd also like to, um, thank the young women who came to talk to us at the beginning of the meeting, that was really a very powerful, um, presentation from them, and, and I do, um, hope that they continue to be involved and share their, their thoughts and, um, you know, really, uh, wonderful input, um, for all of us. Um, and then lastly, I just, um, following the mayor's, uh, comments about, um, Jesse Feldman, I was, um, also very, um, saddened to learn about her passing last week. Um, I knew her mostly from the League of Women Voters and her, um, long involvement with the league's, um, local government committee. She was in charge of the Observer Corps, so she's, she was responsible for getting all those league members to come to watch us at city council and at our, um, standing committee meetings, um. And then she often had, um, words of wisdom for us that she would give to us in public comment about uh, ways to, um, make our local government better, so, um, certainly gonna miss her participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Ravel. Uh, Alderman Rainey?
Yes, well, um, Alderman Ravel just word for word gave my speech for tonight. So I will add something, um, I'm, I'm gonna repeat some. You have got to read the Chicago Magazine article on Alderman Simmons' journey to this point. It is magnificent. And I, I can't imagine anybody doing a better job on, on that article, it was just wonderful, and she should be very proud. Um, and the young women that spoke tonight, it was, it really very moving, and I was very touched. I wanna say something about Erica Storley tonight. This is Pride Month. And I, I want to caution those people who come to our council meetings and write editorials in the paper and make comments about Erica Storley. She is a brilliant woman who is doing a wonderful job for many of us to work in city government. Um, I have heard slurs and terrible comments, and I hope she's not listening, but they, they are terrible accusations about this woman who is doing a magnificent job getting us through this awful time in our history, actually. And she is a, a, I have not heard woman bashing, or, I mean, it's coming close to being gay bashing in a long time, we have to be very careful in, in, in not degrading people like I've heard her degrading. It's a terrible thing, so please, everybody, be respectful, be kind, don't be hateful. And, and I, it goes for Wally Bobkowitz too, I think you can want an open, uh, you can want a search for a city manager without being hateful, it isn't necessary. So that's my message, um, regarding Erica. I, I would vote to hire her tonight and feel as though I've done the best job ever in searching for a city manager, but if she wants to go out for a search and it just indicates her willingness to, to be transparent as she has been the most transparent city manager. And so I just, I just wanna say that to everyone, especially the women in our community who have been the most, um, really, the most, um, aggressive towards being, uh, insulting towards her. So please, let's, let's try and be kinder now that you've all gotten your way, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman, uh, Alderman Fleming?
Uh, yeah, I don't know Ms. Cooper, but I have to just applaud her for keeping the people at Jacob Lake and Prim Towers, um, healthy, that is quite, um, for them, her and the citizens, I mean, that, that's quite a feat, that's kinda almost against everything we've heard about our senior community, so, thank you, Ms. Cooper, wherever you are. Um, I want to, um, publicly thank Pastor Daniel Ruin from Grace Lutheran Church. He's stepping down from his, um, role there as pastor after thirteen years, and he has done, um, a tremendous amount of work, not only in his church, but in the community, and then just around the state and lobbying for poor people and disenfranchised people, so, um, we just, we'll miss him in the ninth ward, he's still a resident, but he is leaving his post to take care of his family, which we all know is very important as well. Um, also, a comment about the police review board, um, I appreciate what Alderman Rue Simmons said about getting some different voices on there. I'm, I'm glad we had so many people apply, I imagine it was a hard choice, but I, I must say when we start looking at the names, I would like to see some new names on there, I would like to see some people who have not served on boards and commissions before, who aren't kinda our go-to, um, well, not go-to, but are people who, who we might recognize, I, I think that's a great place to bring some new voice, and particularly people who have had different experience. Um, I also would like us to look at that board again as it's getting ready to launch, and we now see nationally that there is a lot of work to be done with every police force, and to make sure that there's a way that we can make sure that board really has some teeth, and that they have a a voice, and they're really helping us as a council to make sure that we have police who are treating everyone fairly and with respect that they deserve here in the city. And then lastly, just, um, regarding, you know, all that we see, our, our world is on fire now, literally, and just, I think, you know, morally maybe, um, and so I thank the young people who came forward, I thank the young people who spoke not only for their ten minutes, but, you know, I saw a few new faces there in public comment. So I would really just encourage you all to continue, I, I'm thankful you're home now during this time from college, that you will continue to participate, that you will get more young people to participate. And I would just challenge all the people who have come to all these marches and rallies and everything we've had, that I would say that's really only the iceberg, because, I mean, these things, we see them on TV, we see them on social media, but they didn't just evolve, we've been, if you've paid attention to anything in this country, I mean, public luncheons have been spectacle for a long time with black folks, and so, um, I, I appreciate everyone coming out, but I'm really gonna challenge our city, and I'm gonna reserve hope and celebration until I see us all making commitments to do more, um, to improve the lives of black people, but Latino people, I mean, I still will say here at the city, we do not have a language translation policy, so we have a cadre of people we don't even communicate with on a daily basis. Um, so while we, we celebrate and we had signs and we came out and that's an effort, the, the real work begins after the protests finish. And so if we as a city are committed to that, then everyone should be doing what they can in their space to do much more, and it doesn't have to be a big public spectacle, but the, the city's not gonna change on its own, and it's not gonna change because we came to a rally, so I'm gonna encourage, you know, even myself, my peers, and, you know, everyone who lives and works here, we have a lot of work to do, and I think we can't continue to call ourselves Evanston and talk about diversity and all these things, when people in this town are really hurting and having a tremendously different life experience than some others, and I think it's past the point of acknowledging that, it's past the point of talking about that, but we have to make some real tangible changes, um, so people can see that this is a city that values everybody, so, um, I'm just gonna continue to make the plea that we actually put some action behind our words, um, and, and really do all we can to, to make everyone welcome here.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming, Alderman Fisk?
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, well, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to put actions behind my words. I think we have to be very careful about the words that we're using, though. And, um, I've been around for a long time and have, you know, watched many, many different social issues in my lifetime, and this is the most important one, and it's, it's, uh, it's something that I care about very deeply. And I understand the dynamic of, um, uh, frustration and rage and anger, um, that that has to turn into communication and a willingness to work together, but I am extremely concerned about what has, um, what has appeared to many to be a character assassination on Ms. Storley. And I think that we all need to look inside of us and see what our responsibility as council members may be towards sending that message out into the community. Uh, because I'm, I'm very serious about that. Um, I was at the rally yesterday, and I thought it was a wonderful rally, and, um, and I, I, it was, I mean, just great to hear what everybody was saying, the underlying message there is something that I, 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 I agree with, so not only did I learn a lot, but, but I found, um, great strength and, um, um, a, a, a renewed, um, commitment and understanding that we can get together and get on the same page and make a real difference, and that's what I want to do. But we can't do it if we're calling people names, and we can't do it if we see, um, a benefit or a success by driving someone down. Social media right now controls the life and career of all of us, but most importantly, we should be looking out for our employees. And these are people that we're here to protect, and we're here to work with, and we're here to deal with in whatever way, um, we can, and try to make this city work again for everybody. So I am, I am more than happy to, uh, to step up to the challenge and do my part and work with all of you, my colleagues. I respect all of you, I, um, I, I want to make this work, but we need, we need to really study what are the messages that we're sending out into the community. Um, that said, um, I, I guess since everyone has talked for a while, I will tell you a story, and that is that, um, I'm older than a lot of you, but, uh, I, I remember when I was young, going with older or young adults in my household and marching with Dr. King, uh, for the, um, open housing march that ended up in Soldier Field. And that made, I was, I, I was young, it made an incredible impression upon me, it was a huge march. It was one of those hundred degree days in July. And I sat in Soldier Field and I listened to this man's voice, and I, as a child, was very moved. I'm committed to trying to make things better. I came home with a terrible sunburn, my mother was angry at the young adults, but I'm, that, that was okay. So it's, it's, this, this is, um, this is very meaningful to me. Um, but it's also very meaningful that we do this the right way and with professionalism and caring and understanding of that everybody's life is involved here, and I don't care who it is, everyone, everyone's life is involved. And we need to do what we need to do to make this right. So, I think all of us were, I mean, stunned, undiscussed, sickened by what we saw going on in Minneapolis. I hope that would never happen here, I trust that it would never happen here, but we need to make sure that that will never happen here. We need to make sure that everyone is treated fairly, we may, need to make sure that our police department is working properly. We need to make sure that every decision that we make on council, that we really are using that equity lens as we look at the work that we do. But we also need to be fair. Now, on a brighter note, I will say that, um, I wanna thank all of my colleagues, and especially the city staff that worked on Fountain Square. Fountain Square really works for big, big groups of people. I was so impressed with that, and everyone, they were social distancing, they were wearing masks, they were gathered on. on all three sides, traffic could still move. And if it weren't for the helicopter above, which drowned out everybody's voices, it would have been a perfect day. So thank you, staff. And I wish that Jessie Feldman could have been there because she would have loved that. And I, I just think, you know, I've never known anyone in my life who had more knowledge at her fingertips and could, there was nothing that got past her. She was so sharp as a tack until the last time I saw her, which I think was in December, but just an amazing woman and so interested in government and everything that made it work. It was nice to have a chance every time I got to talk to her. I absolutely, I loved it. And, and when she got to Mather, she was still as involved when she got to Mather. So she served on the, on the Parking and Safety Committee and I went over there and talked with them and she was taking notes. So thank you, Jessie, for everything that you've done for us in Evanston. Thank you to all of you, all of my eight colleagues on the council for your commitment and your service and your respect and love for one another. I appreciate that very, very much. And we need to make this all right and we need to work together. So that's my message to you tonight.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is hard to find the words, especially after everything that I heard, but what I think is definitely worth repeating, the young ladies who organized the march a couple of weeks ago, I just want to lift them up for doing an incredible job of setting the tone for what we are seeing now in Evanston with so many rallies. If you think about this time a couple of weeks ago, while we were having a rally peacefully, you know, there was so much destruction in the world and that was led by our youth. And I just want to thank all of those young ladies as well, acknowledge the residents who have maintained the peace and been very respectful throughout this time. I want to also acknowledge my peers, my white peers, because I think I have seen at least each and every one of you out participating with ears wide open to listen to the concerns of the community. And if you have not had an opportunity to attend, I'm sure there are more to come. So just thank you. Someone asked, or I think someone talked about action and I think that that's real clear to us all. A lot of this tone, or I felt, I feel like, the tone that we experienced coming into office started at the top. And I think the action steps are very simple. It's to get out and vote. That's simple. Vote. And I hope that the future assemblies, as difficult it may be, that that is the message that we carry going into November, just how important it is that we vote. Last Sunday, I just want to acknowledge the brothers that came out, Omar Brown, Pastor Neighbors, Dr. Logan, Jude Laud, I'm going to probably forget someone, but to all the organizers last Sunday who delivered a very powerful message at Fountain Square, I just want to salute you. I do want to make a, a comment regarding the Police Committee, at least the names that I saw. I thought that they were very well thought out and you have a very important job in front of you. And for the 60-plus that applied, I would encourage you, we have a whole list of over, what, 30, 40 different committees that the mayor gets to appoint to. I hope that if you didn't, if you couldn't serve on the city, like, it'll definitely be an opportunity in the future, but we still have openings on the MWEBE Committee. I believe, Mr. Mayor, there are two seats available on the Equity Empowerment Committee and a whole list of others. So if you are interested in serving, those meetings are always going to be public. We can definitely attend, but I would encourage you to look at that long list and find something where you have an opportunity to let your voice be heard. So I just want to thank you for the selection. I thought that that was a very diverse group representing all the communities that are impacted citywide by our police. And I do think it's important to lift up as well that our numbers are trending down in terms of police complaints. So I hope that that committee doesn't have to meet often, to be honest. I'll say it again. I really hope that that committee does not have to meet often. That means that our police department is doing their job. The mayor in a public announcement two weeks ago called for a meeting with black leadership here in town. I just want to lift that up. Alderman Simmons earlier talked about reparations and we have established a group of stakeholders, Mr. Mayor, that comprise of community leaders, faith leaders, leaders in the education fight, as well as leaders in the business community. And I hope that when you're ready to call that meeting, that we can involve that stakeholders group as the nucleus to provide the insight and, and feedback that you're looking for. Lastly, well, two other items. This, this Thursday at 6 o'clock, I'm inviting the residents of the second ward. I said this two weeks ago as it pertains to the process of city manager. I'm, I'm really looking to hear from my residents, to hear what their priorities are, the things that my residents feel that are important, characteristics, things that are top of mind that I should know in terms of the decision that I have to make for city manager. So I look forward to adding that. That's going to be our main discussion point this Thursday at 6. And then the last thing is a referral, and this is for Erica, but really I'm going to look for Chief Cook to bring this back. I'm looking for like a best practice for recording. I think that we are fortunate in this society that everybody has a cell phone. Obviously, a lot of these crimes that we are seeing now, the crimes against humanities and people are capturing with their cell phones, probably 20 years ago that wouldn't happen. Now everyone has a cell phone. We're in the process of reviewing a case that involved a, a police stop. And I just, I want our police department to be forward-thinking and come out with a best practice, whether it's five feet, 10 feet, 15 feet. How far should our residents have to, should they stand away from a crime scene that gives them the ability to tape, but tape safely where they should not have to worry about any interactions from the police? And should they have to, for whatever reason, there's an interaction, I would hope that it would be from a supervisor who comes to the scene later, not from the tape that I had an opportunity to see, which it looks like the officer had to step away from the crime scene in order, in order to engage that individual. So I will talk about that more, but I think that that's very important that we address. And, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wayne?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to all of my colleagues for all of the comments that they've made tonight. I think they're all really important and I'm very, very glad to hear them. First and foremost, thank you to those young women who spoke so eloquently and powerfully tonight. I want to go back and watch that tape again. And I would invite them and welcome them to participate with us as a council as we move forward. They are leaders already, but I can see bright futures for each of them in terms of their, their work in the community. And I would like them to know that we are listening and would like them, not just to talk to us, but talk with us and share with us their ideas. I, I also want to thank Reverend Neighbors and all of the organizers of yesterday's rally in Fountain Square. So many powerful speeches there as well. It was nice to see our former colleague, now Judge Lionel Jean-Baptiece there, lifting up his voice as he always did when he was here among us. I really appreciated that. And I do, I look forward to the work we have ahead. We have a lot of work. We've done some of it, but it's not enough. And, and I am listening. And I do want to listen more. And then finally, I want to offer my condolences to the family of Jessie Feldman. She was a true citizen of Evanston in the sense that she, she came to all these meetings and she didn't get to say anything. Can you imagine sitting through these meetings and just taking notes? I always was flo- floored by that. And, and her commitment to democracy and, and fairness was really powerful. And she did always have some constructive criticism to offer. And, but it was always useful with a lot of deep knowledge. And so she will be missed. And she really was, she contributed enormously to her community and that's a real tribute.
Thank you, Alderman Wayne. Alderman Wilson, you wrap it up tonight.
And thank you. And I, there's a lot to talk about tonight. I, I want to touch on my, the fact that I appreciate the input I've gotten with regard to the city manager process. One thing that's, that's clear to me in talking to people is that Erica is the kind of person that does the work and gets it done, but she's not out there looking for accolades and credit. So I think once people get a better understanding of what she's been doing, the ideas she's had, I think that's going to really be impactful on, on, on how people see the quality of work that we've been getting in our community. I do want to thank everybody who's been organizing events in our community, particularly the women who organized the march last week. We start with listening, but people are done with talk and people deserve action. And one of the things, and I think Alderman Fleming touched on it a little bit, is that we need to, we need to stop whitewashing history. We need to start talking about what's really happened in our country and our community and accept responsibility for these things. And I think back to textbooks that I had when I was a kid and knowing now what I didn't know then. You know, certainly kids need age-appropriate content, but we're raising generation after generation of, of, of children and they don't have an appropriate grasp of what our real history is. And it's time for that to stop. I'm going to miss Jessie Feldman's input. I'm going to miss having her at the meetings. She was a, certainly a leader and doing tireless, thankless work promoting democracy. And she, she's going to be greatly missed and I appreciate everything she's done. She was a great leader in our community. I know, I, I don't like resolutions, but in, in, again, listening to some of the things that I heard over the weekend, I want to entertain the possibility of having a resolution for our Rules Committee to enter, to, to think about. My opinion, I don't know how everybody else feels, but Evanston tends to be a leader in certain things like sanctuary cities, gun ordinances, a number of things. I really think our country needs to push forward in supporting democracy and rethinking the Electoral College. And I would like to entertain possibly some sort of resolution along those lines if, if the group's willing. So with that, that's my comments for call awards. I've said this before, I appreciate all of you. I'm very grateful for my colleagues. We have conversations, we have debates, we have spirited debates, we have disagreements, but it's the, it's that process that gets us to a better place. And without that process, we wouldn't accomplish that. So thank you all.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. And can you lead us into executive session this evening?
A really nice one.
Okay. Pursuant to 501 compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the City Council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding litigation and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered an executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. Actually, Corporation Council, do we have a personnel matter on the agenda or is it just litigation and minutes?
Several things. It's just litigation.
Okay, all right. So just double checking. The exceptions are 5ILCS 120/2A, C1 and C11.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Cindy Clark, could you please take the roll to recess into executive session?
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin?
Aye.
Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Ray?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wayne?
Aye.
Alderman Colsey?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Clerk Reed. On a nine to zero vote, the Evanston City Council's going to recess into executive session. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and participating. We will see you at the next City Council meeting on Monday, June 27.